To call this committee of the whole for Monday, October 8th. To order with the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowersox?
Here.
Ms. Shanawir?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Thank you. Are there additions to the agenda this evening? Yes, Heather?
I don't think there's, oh, I don't know if there's additions, but I know that we've got a new set of minutes. Let's just make a note of that.
Okay. Thanks. There was a request to move 16, which is talking about demolition delay up to right after public input, so we'd have demolition delay, and then we would talk about the consolidated fleet maintenance facility, which are both items that people are here to speak about. Are there any concerns about moving that agenda item up to the top?
No.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and do that. Is there a staff report this evening? Mayor, go ahead.
Well, I think you all know that we have the Westerbana neighborhood honored as one of the 10, the top 10 neighborhoods in the United States, and I think that's really impressive. And I know these people have worked very hard over a number of years to keep it a residential community. And I have a proclamation to read, but in the meantime, I've also found out that the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association also has won an award, the Governor's Hometown Award, for their Victory Park redevelopment project.
So I've heard, yes.
So busting out all over here. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity publicly to recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Urbana, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of City of Urbana in Champaign County, Illinois, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals, and whereas the American Planning Association has recognized West Urbana as one of the 2007 Top 10 Great Neighborhoods in America because West Urbana has, quote, "maintained its unique neighborhood identity," unquote, "walkability and inviting neighborhood spaces due to an active citizenry and sustained planning efforts," and whereas through the efforts of the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association, the Victory Park redevelopment project has won a Governor's Hometown Award. Now therefore I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim October 2007 as Community Planning Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month.
Go ahead, Brandon.
I just wanted to, on that note, thank Libby Tyler, Rob Olshansky, the whole group of people who helped with the award of West Urbana, and wondered if Libby wanted to say a few words and sort of thank all the people involved, and also whether Cynthia Hoyle, who's here in the audience, might want to say a few words. I know she's been planning a movie night to celebrate Planning Month and to celebrate the awards.
Go ahead, Dr. Tyler.
Thank you. This truly is an honor for West Urbana, and we have, it's the first year they've done these designations by the American Planning Association. We know the West Urbana neighborhood is just a beautiful place, and it's walkable, and it's diverse, and it's got great civic institutions, and all of this was put forward in the nomination by Professor Rob Olshansky, who's a member of the neighborhood, and information was provided by the city and all the repeated follow-ups, and by West Urbana Neighborhood Association and council members. And we did a good job convincing the APA. We are in excellent company. We're the only small city, small to even medium-sized city, that's been recognized. So if you go to planning.org website and get a nice write-up, and I know we had a nice article in the newspaper, and there will be additional articles in recognition in Planning Magazine. So this truly is a celebration, and thank you to everyone for all you do to plan in Urbana and support planning.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Mayor. Then Dennis. Go ahead, Dennis.
Well, it's also true that, I mean, this is amazing. We have kind of like bookends of excellence in the City of Urbana. We have a beautiful downtown. We now have an award-winning place to live in West Urbana, and also, East Urbana has received the Governor's Award for its improvements at Victory Park. I'd really like to thank the Park District, Ellen Kersenoff, and Tim Bartlett, and Vicki Mays for having put forward the Victory Park project to the Governor's Award this year. Although I was out of town when the committee came to view the park, there was, very many residents came out and spoke for the process. We were under the impression that we might be bypassed this year because the improvements weren't completed all the way, and we really didn't expect to come out on top, but apparently we have. So two beautiful parts of our town receiving recognition, and Cynthia, I'd be interested to hear what your comments are.
Hi, Cynthia Hoyle, 2207 South Cottage Grove. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk. I knew we had had our West Urbana neighborhood nominated because I, in fact, emailed Libby and suggested we should nominate them, and she said that Rob Olshansky was already on it, which I was pleased to hear because that meant I could just enjoy the application being made. And so when I heard that we had won, and I looked at the company that we were in, I was very excited, and this is all part of Community Planning Month, so I decided, well, we have to do something else to maintain the momentum. So I suggested to the mayor and some of the city council that we consider having a mini film festival on short notice. So October 21st and 28th, we are looking at showing some films right here in the council chambers. These are films from a company called Bullfrog Films. So far, we have three. None of them are that long, so we could show two per night. Right now, we have one titled Cities; It's About How to Build Sustainable Cities; one called Eden's Lost and Found Chicago, about how Chicago worked with neighborhoods to redevelop them; and then the last one was Designing a Great Community, I think. I didn't have the whole title written down. It's about an old drive-in movie theater in Boulder that is being redeveloped as a community with a goal of zero carbon emissions and cohousing. And so those would all be interesting films for the community to take a look at so that we can continue to build Urbana as a sustainable community and continue our growth toward being a great place to live.
Great, thanks, Cynthia. Any other things from staff report? Could I take a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, particularly the revised minutes that were on your desk this evening?
So moved.
I have a motion from Lynn. A second from Heather. Any discussion? Charlie?
I just want to make sure that the word plaque is spelled right towards the end, and there might be a G instead of a Q, and I don't think we want to be plagued. We want to be placked.
So would the motion or the second or take as a friendly amendment, the spelling changed to plaque? Thank you. Dennis?
Concerning item number 12, when we forwarded the text amendment for the ordinance concerning neighborhood conservation districts, I guess, as I recall, it was, I believe it was forwarded to the next committee of the whole in November, but am I wrong? Wasn't it the first meeting in November that was the committee of the whole? And I think the minutes say that it's going to go before city council.
Are you referring to the last paragraph in 12?
Yeah.
Ms. Shanawir has made a motion to amend the, basically, the neighborhood conservation districts. Okay.
Yeah.
So your proposal is to, what was the date? I can't remember.
I don't remember the date. We just said, I think, the first meeting in November. Is that correct, Brandon?
Actually, I think this was the committee meeting two weeks ago, so this was when we did send it, if I remember right, we did send it to council, and then at council last week, we decided, let's wait a month and fix it.
Oh, okay.
So I think this was to council.
Okay. I think maybe you're right. Thank you.
Any other changes to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that carries. Next, we will hear from members of the public. I have four folks who have signed up to speak, and others who want to speak. If you just spell out one of these gold forms and bring it to the clerk, you can speak. We're asking folks to limit their comments to five minutes, and if you have questions, we'll try to address the comments, the questions during the agenda item. Those who, it looks like everyone wants to speak at the beginning, so we'll hear from Rick Prince first on the intergovernmental study on fleet maintenance. Rick, go ahead. If you can just state your name and address, and the other members of the public, just state it for the public record, please.
Do I sit down, or?
Yeah, if you could sit down, that little microphone actually will pick up your voice still.
My name is Rick Prince, R-I-C-K-P-R-I-N-C-E. I'm the staff representative for AFSCME Council 31, representing the employees that work for Public Works, in the police department, et cetera. And we just became aware of a proposal to have a study for an intergovernmental agreement to consolidate some fleet departments. We represent those employees in the fleet department at the City of Urbana, and quite frankly, in the folks for the city of Champaign, too. What concerns us is, quite frankly, this hasn't been brought to the union at all. If there's been any discussions, it hasn't been brought to the union, and it certainly does need to be brought to the union. These are the kinds of things that are a mandatory subject of bargaining. These are the kinds of things that definitely concern wages, hours, and terms and conditions of employment. Some of the, I was reading through some of the draft resolutions, some of the ideas of what would be discussed in the study, and it really concerns me because it talks about what's going to happen with, you know, with the employees that we represent, and with the employees that, as you'll hear in just a few minutes, the employees that have many, many years of experience doing the kinds of work, the fleet maintenance, the mechanics, many years of experience doing that kind of work, and not only at the City of Urbana, but on the outside, too. And that kind of experience lends great help and a great benefit to the city by having that done in-house. You have immediate in-house oversight where you wouldn't be able to have that. Apparently, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, about this. There's a pretty good-sized document in the packet of information that I received just tonight, as a matter of fact, and it's a lot of information, as I said, that should be brought to the union so we can talk about this first. We must be given the opportunity to sit down and discuss this. It is, it's not only imperative, it's the law, because we do have the right to discuss this. This is a mandatory subject. So all I can say is that we want to sit down and talk with the city as soon as we can. This isn't something that should get so far down the road that we, you know, that we're in battle about it, you know, over and over again. This is something we should be able to take care of in-house and soon. We have been, this work has been done in-house, and so we need to talk about it in-house, too, before it gets much worse. So that's all I have.
Questions for Rick? Charlie?
Yeah, Rick, do you know who represents the equivalent personnel at the university?
We do not, no.
Okay.
AFSCME does not.
Do you know who does? Are they?
I think it might be the operating engineers. I don't, but don't quote me on that.
Okay, thank you.
It's not AFSCME.
Other questions? Rick, I just had a quick question for you.
Sure.
We talked about, we actually authorized a study of a joint maintenance facility with Champaign a number of months ago. Were you aware that that happened?
No, I wasn't.
Okay. So you weren't aware of that or this recent?
No.
Okay.
No. They had a meeting, and actually, the officers election for the union officers here just this past week, and they told me that this might be coming up. And then, you know, this was like Tuesday or Wednesday, and then I find out that this is on the agenda for tonight. I'm like, what's going on here? I mean, we need to, you know, we need to sit and talk about this. The folks there hadn't heard anything about it, you know, up until very recently, too. And then it starts, it seems to us, it looked like it's starting to snowball. So we need to stop the snowball before, so we can sit down and talk about it first.
Okay. Well, it's the second thing on the agenda, so when we get to that, you'll hear the staff report, and council can ask questions of our staff on that topic. Okay?
Okay.
Thanks for your participation.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Jason Scott on the same issue, the fleet maintenance feasibility study. Jason, if you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
Jason Scott. I actually live in Sydney. I'm here representing, I'm the president of our local 1331 there at Public Works. And basically, tonight, we'd like to take the opportunity to voice our concerns about the consolidation or possible outsourcing of our fleet maintenance division. At this time, Public Works employs three technicians with a combined work experience of 90 years within the equipment repair field, as well as a combined 40 years of service to the City of Urbana. These technicians fully understand that contractual work must be done at times to keep up with workloads. However, with rumor and talk of outsourcing maintenance repairs, it sounds as if jobs may be eliminated, and that is a cause for unease. When asked, various members of the City of Urbana Police and Fire Divisions have stated that they are not enthusiastic about this proposal as they are very satisfied with the services that they receive from our technicians. Additionally, Public Works employees are not enthusiastic and are apprehensive that Public Works operations in general could be affected by the proposal, especially during snow events or any type of disaster situations. It is imperative that our mechanics are readily available to deal with any number of requests. Most importantly, the union is troubled that there has not been an open dialogue for discussion of this matter between divisions and with all the various involved parties, and we would like the situation to change. A proposed fleet consolidation will affect the way in which the city maintains its fleet, which in turn will affect many aspects of the Public Works Operations Division. Therefore, we sincerely appreciate, sincerely appreciate opening the lines of communication to the union and ask for your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Adams? Thanks, appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Scott. I had the wrong name in front of me. Sorry. Next, we'll actually hear from Mr. Adams, Bryan Adams, on the issue of demolition delay.
My name's Bryan Adams. I live at 412 West Elm Street in Urbana, and I just had a chance today to look through the proposed demolition delay ordinance, and there were a couple of things in there that concerned me, so I just wanted to bring them up and hope that the city council could consider these when they discuss this issue later on this evening. The first thing I noticed was that, I believe it's in Section 6, where it discusses the area that would be covered under this ordinance. The Moore District isn't mentioned, the mixed-office residential section of the city, and I think this is a very important area that shouldn't be excluded. Just earlier this year, two houses were landmarked by the city, and it was only because of intensive research that the architectural and historic significance of these buildings was discovered. And so I think that there's potentially a lot more historic structures in this area, and I do think that it should be included in the proposed ordinance. The second thing was, I think that the restriction to applying the ordinance only to areas that have been previously surveyed by various historic architectural surveys, PACA, and I believe there was another survey in the '70s. I don't, I believe that should be dropped, too. I don't think we should just restrict ourselves to areas that have been previously surveyed because that could potentially exclude some areas that, East Urbana, North Urbana, and Northwest Urbana, that, I don't know how systematic those surveys were, or how the boundaries were decided upon, but I think there's a potential to exclude some areas that may have potentially significant structures that we just don't know about. So I wouldn't restrict it to just areas that have been surveyed already. And then finally, I don't think that it should, the ordinance should apply to buildings that are only 75 years old or older. I think that I would agree with the Preservation Commission, which I believe recommended 50-year, a 50-year limit. I do cultural resource management work, I do archaeological surveys, and one of the requirements that the State of Illinois sets for us is that if we do a survey of a parcel of land, and there are any standing structures that are older than 50 years, we are required to photograph those structures and submit them to IHPA in Springfield for architectural evaluation. So I think that the 50-year limit that the city has already, the state has already set should be adhered to here. Houses that are 50 years old are going back middle 20th century, a period that was interesting for many reasons historically, and some of those structures may also be architecturally and historically significant. So I would stick with the 50-year limit rather than the 75-year limit. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Adams? Thanks for your input. Next, we're going to hear from Alona Matkowski, also on the issue of demolition delay.
Hi, I'm Alona Matkowski. I live at 412 West Elm Street in Urbana. I am overjoyed that finally we are talking about demolition delay, and I hope that we will construct a demolition delay that will truly be useful and helpful for the historic buildings of this city. This is why I'm here tonight. The issues that Bryan Adams has talked about concern me as well, and I would like to repeat what he said and add some words, some additional information to what he said. One of my major concern is that the demolition delay would apply only to buildings on which we already have historic resource surveys. This would include huge, exclude huge areas of Urbana that are historically extremely important and architecturally extremely important, virtually all of East Urbana, all of the northern, northwest, northeastern part of Urbana, because these areas have not been surveyed. East Urbana is one of the oldest neighborhoods in Urbana, and no survey has been done on it other than incidental buildings. It needs to be included in the delay, or we're going to lose buildings that may be very important, some of which we just discovered this spring to be very important by very intensive research on Joseph Royer. Secondly, I would like to emphasize the fact that the mixed-office residential area that is West Elm and West Green Street are also not included in the demolition delay, which is a huge mistake, because this is the oldest area of Urbana, residential Urbana, has the most important buildings historically and architecturally in Urbana, and basically not including them leaves them up for grabs in automatic demolition. Would be a huge mistake to allow this. I would also like to point out that the areas that are left out from the demolition delay are the very areas that constitute the Joseph Royer Arts and Architectural District, as we have proposed it earlier, the northern part of East Urbana, and the northern part of West Urbana, and downtown. This proposition for the district has been unanimously supported both by the Historic Preservation Commission and by the city council earlier. So I think it is necessary that we extend our efforts, if we are to set up this district and accept the validity of the district, we extend our efforts to protect the buildings within this district. The idea of the district itself admits the importance or supports the importance of this area as historically and architecturally important. So I think any kind of ordinance that the city council passes must also support the significance of this, historic significance of this area and protect this area, protect the fantastic architecture and historic assets located within this area. I would also like to point out what Bryan already said, that the buildings that are part of, or considered in the demolition delay should be those 50 years or older, not 75 years, as that's the standard accepted by the Historic Preservation Agency of Illinois. We should adopt that. And finally, I think it's a great thing that Urbana got two great awards, both East Urbana and West Urbana, and the citizens of Urbana are very happy for this. But I would also like to point out an important thing and relevant to historic preservation. One of the criteria in the nomination of the most livable cities in the United States was neighborhood character and personality. And neighborhood character and personality was a question, included the question, how does the neighborhood retain, interpret, and use local history to help create a sense of place? So local history is a very important point in nominating our city or any city in Urbana, in the United States, as the most livable cities. So we have to keep that in mind when we consider ordinances for protecting the historic character of the city. One of the sentences in the application for this nomination from Urbana reads, "West Urbana has maintained its unique neighborhood identity for more than a century, refusing to succumb to the pressures of high-density development or issues surrounding absentee landlords. Many historic properties remain today the result of an active citizenry and sustained planning efforts." We do feel that, West Urbana citizens, we do feel that, yes, there has been a very active citizenry, and you have to do a lot with protecting many of the historic buildings that would have been demolished without the participation of the citizens in protecting these buildings. Very often, we feel, however, that our efforts are uphill efforts, and we are fighting against ordinances and recommendations that are not truly for historic preservation or not as fully for historic preservation as they should be. I feel, right now, we have an ordinance like that, and the points I pointed out are the problematic ones, so it would be great if the city would make, the city council would make the changes that will make the demolition delay ordinance powerful and effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Dennis.
You did mention the inclusion of the MOR district and also the downtown area. We haven't really talked about demolition delay for commercial buildings or historic commercial buildings. commercial buildings. We've limited to buildings that go up to, you know, R6, R6B, and restricted businesses, and R7, university residential. So they are very inclusive, and they do include, you know, multi-residential, high-density houses, or older homes, or apartment houses, or whatever. So what is your take on the absence of having any discussion about commercial demolition delay?
I think that, I think it is a real big problem, because as we have pointed out in this Joseph Royer Art and Architectural District, there are extremely important buildings in the commercial core of Urbana, downtown Urbana, and that's basically the core area of this district. We have found so far, I think, 14 buildings by Joseph Royer himself, and at least four or five of them in downtown Urbana were just recognized as his buildings in the last couple of months. So if somebody wanted to demolish those buildings, they could have been demolished very easily, without us knowing that they were architecturally important buildings. I believe that the commercial, commercial buildings should be also part of this. I would like to point out that in 2009, we will celebrate the 200th birthday of Lincoln, and the city has been, has applied for financial support for celebrating this, and we were looking for structures associated with Lincoln. Lincoln was an important figure in Urbana. Unfortunately, we cannot identify a single structure in Urbana currently as associated with Lincoln, even though he was an important figure here for 10 years. He was on the circuit and acted as a lawyer here. So perhaps if we extended the demolition delay to commercial buildings, which is what Lincoln was associated with in downtown, or if we had demolition delay earlier, those buildings that he was associated with would still be standing without the demolition delay, and the possibility of researching the history of a building and nominating the building as a landmark, the building can go down, and perhaps the next year, or two years, or 10 years later, or the 200-year celebration, we find out that we shouldn't have demolished that building, because we now know what the building was associated with. So I think it's very important to take a more careful look at commercial buildings as well.
Okay. Thanks for your input.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public here to speak before the Committee of the Hall? Okay, if not, we're going to move on to demolition delay. We're referring to, what was 16 on your original agenda, ordinance number 2007-10-118, and ordinance establishing a delay period for the issuance of demolition permits for the purpose of historic preservation. We'll hear from Robert Myers on our planning staff.
At the September 24th Committee of the Hall meeting, the City Council directed staff to prepare a demolition delay ordinance that would include the following elements: a delay period with no more than 45 days, a delay period allowing for landmark applications to be submitted during the delay period, a delay period, limited properties in the residential zoning districts, limited properties which are at least 75 years old, and also limited properties for which there's historic resource surveys that have been completed. And so based on that, city staff has prepared this proposed ordinances, and we felt it was important to include several exceptions, for instance, exceptions for local landmarks in historic districts, permits issued before ordinance approval, properties in TIF districts are those for which redevelopment agreement with the City Council, or with the city is in effect or impending. It also wouldn't affect construction, repair, or maintenance, not involving exterior demolition. For instance, if someone is repairing, or maintaining their house, or is doing interior demolition, it would not affect, would not come into effect. And also would exclude accessory buildings less than 500 square feet. And then finally, there's a category of unsafe or dilapidated structures, which is determined by the chief building official, necessary for demolition before 45-day delay period is up. With that, I'd also like to add that we consulted with city legal staff, and we feel the proper course to take is to hold a public hearing on this proposed action, even though it's not a plan commission item, it's not a amendment to the zoning ordinance, it does have some striking similarities in that it is a site-specific land use decision that affects a known set of properties, and we're talking about essentially 200, or 1,023 properties, or thereabouts at this point, with known properties and known addresses. So because it's similar to zoning action, it would be advisable to hold a public hearing before taking final action on any ordinance. And of course, we're not taking final action here tonight, so that's just our recommendation to go along with the ordinance that we provided. And just for a point of clarification, on historic resource surveys, the reason that is significant is that there needs to be a rational basis for which properties demolition delay would apply for. If not, it would be similar, it could be seen as being similar to designating the entire city as a, as one giant historic district. And really, we're trying to limit the review, or excuse me, the demolition delay to properties where there's a significant, a significant chance of encountering historic resources. And that's, that's the reason for that. For instance, people have asked that we've looked at the city of Plainfield, Illinois' demolition delay ordinance, and in fact, they had a historic resource survey that, my understanding, is entirely virtually, covered the entire city virtually, in terms of properties. And it's just the fact that we have extensive historic resource surveys, but they're not as, as even as we would like. It doesn't cover some neighborhoods, unfortunately, but this is what we have to work with, and we have what we have, so.
Questions? Go ahead, Brandon, and then Dennis.
Yeah, Robert, with the public hearing issue, is there a certain number of days, 15 or 30 days or something, that we have to publicize the public hearing, or could we send this to council next week for a vote?
We spoke with legal staff today, and they felt like that it would be wise to use the same time period as for rezoning actions, and that's a 15-day public notice.
Go ahead, Dennis, and then Lynn.
You were just saying that the area in which significant structures would exist would certainly be within the, connected to the age of the homes that were surveyed already. And we have a lot of homes that haven't been surveyed that equal, or perhaps exceed, the age of those that have been surveyed. And this, so you, as a member of staff, are willing to leave, basically, perhaps a half or two-thirds of the buildings that are at least as old as the ones that are surveyed, kind of remain at risk at this point for uncontested demolition? And you're saying that, that the surveys provide some kind of a basis for establishing a request for delay? But usually, what I recall is that these ordinances, when they're passed in Plainfield and other places, they're not delay ordinances, they're demolition review ordinances, which has a different purpose and a different requirement for that. Now, a delay is not a request for, I mean, a demolition delay ordinance is a much lighter form of, of interaction with the property. It doesn't require the same kinds of constraints, it's not automatic. So I'm wondering about the willingness to allow, you know, perhaps two-thirds of the really old housing structure within the city slip through the preservation concern of the citizens of the city.
Well, we, we realize that that's a flaw, if you want to call it that, in terms of, in terms of the ordinance, but you may remember that previously, our recommendation had been to, that the best way to ensure preservation of historic resources is to continue to designate historic districts and historic landmarks, and that the demolition delay and demolition review, we weighed their benefits and also drawbacks, and we just felt like that the drawbacks were, based on what we have to work with here, that the drawbacks were outweighed the benefits. Just based on our capacity to carry out the ordinance, based on the historic resource surveys that we've done, based on our building permit records, the manpower that we have, and the fact that we're a different community than some of the other communities as well, that we have a dynamic, dynamic commercial redevelopment, that we have policies in place that encourages infill very strongly and redevelopment, so that we can also, we can also further our goals for walkability, for bikeability, to save energy, and all of these other goals that are in balance with our needs for historic preservation. That's why we, we felt like the historic landmarks and historic districts is really the way to go with Urbana.
Just one more comment. The, you know, part of the goal of the demolition review is to have a discussion about other possible reuses of existing buildings. In other words, the goal would really be to keep the older homes, but find new and invigorating uses for them, such as, for example, the knit shop that was recently created on Springfield Avenue across from Strawberry Fields, in which an older, somewhat rundown rental home was converted into a very nicely kept, renovated, business, commercial use of a small business nature. So, well, I understand your comment about we're interested in appropriate infill and economic growth, we're also looking for adaptive reuse.
We can, Lynn, go ahead, and we can also have comments when we have a motion on the table. This is mostly to ask questions for staff.
Okay.
Lynn, do you have a question?
I'm interested, Robert, you know, shared staff's opinion that really demolition review or demolition delay is not preferred from your perspectives, correct? Just to reiterate that.
That's correct.
And is it, is it correct that one reason why not is that it could limit or inhibit appropriate infill that we would be very interested in? Just a question.
Well, that's, that's true. Well, you know, we're concerned about the chilling effect it can have on
Right.
real estate market and redevelopment, but if you look, just in looking at the comprehensive plan, historic preservation is definitely an important element of the comprehensive plan, but also, you know, walkability, and infill development, and energy savings, and all of these other things, and we just want to make sure that historic preservation is, is, continue to be an important element, but it's not necessarily, it doesn't trump all of those other really important goals in the comprehensive plan as well.
And I want to follow up with, I'm very supportive of your opinion with regard to that, and have concern that, you know, to people who are thinking about doing new things in our community, you know, time is money. And so I think this would produce a chilling effect. I'm at least pleased, in this particular document, that it does not include the MOR, it does not include downtown, because I think that could have an even more chilling effect than what this does. But I think that this, at the very least, a public hearing, which frankly, would only involve, I mean, you guys mentioned to do that for homeowners, which of course, but also to get additional feedback from potential developers, would be important as well. You know, I've got concerns about this, I think it's too broad as it's written, and I think that you're right on target. I mean, we already have many things in place to help protect our community from the demolition of, of certain buildings, and obviously, there are some great old houses we want to keep, but you know what? There's also some old houses that we would just love to see torn down, and I'd hate to have us be in a situation where those don't get dealt with.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry to butt in. I just want to clarify something I mentioned. When, when we had the application to revise the standards for the R7 zoning district, one of the things the Plan Commission was really concerned about was providing notice to actually all of the particular properties that are owned, are set, property owners of R7, because it's a known quantity. We knew exactly which properties would be affected, and they thought it was really important that they at least have an opportunity to have some input. And so in terms of public notice, we felt like the most property thing to do would be to provide public notice, and including that, provide public notice to the property owners who would be affected in this case, because it's a known quantity, it's a known list of properties that would be affected, just for the public, for the purposes of due process.
Okay. Other questions, Robert?
Just clarifying, you meant, you alluded to just shortly, that you've looked at, I guess, the record, in terms of demolitions over time, you've looked at where they've taken place, the numbers, and basically, you were saying, in essence, I think, that we really didn't, we really don't have a lot to fear right now. Is that true? About expanding this to be more encompassing, for example?
More encompassing, more encompassing than residential?
Right.
Right. I think it's interesting that maybe about a year ago, a lot of this discussion was started because people were concerned that they lived in a residential neighborhood, and then right next door to them, a house got torn down, and there was an apartment building being built, and they were concerned about how that fit in to the neighborhood.
Correct.
And over, maybe, over time, I think the issue has grown larger, and now it's become review of all development, or all demolitions. And my perception is that a lot of discussion, really, the genesis of it, was in the apartment building next door in a residential neighborhood. And, and so that's, I think, another good reason to limit this to residential, because it deals with the issue that was identified about a year ago, and also in the comprehensive plan, and those calls from neighborhoods and all of that, it really, it deals with that directly.
I understand. Thank you.
Charlie?
Robert, how did the houses within the MOR district fit into this?
Well, the way it's written currently, as, as we discussed last time, you asked us to come back with residential zoning districts, and so we listed those out specifically, so there wouldn't be any question, what do you mean by residential zoning districts? And MOR was not listed among those districts, it's technically not a residential district, although it does have some elements of residential. I mean, it's residential-type buildings, and then permitted land uses in that district are both residential and light commercial.
Oh, so, so the houses actually have an MOR designation, not an R2 or R3 within the MOR?
Right.
That complicates things.
Other questions? Brandon?
Actually, I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Let me just make a, let's, I have a few questions, and then maybe we could have a motion on the floor, and we can comment specifically on that motion. My questions have to do with, let's see, the $25 fee, that would be assessed to the person who owns the property? Is that correct?
There's some discussion about a fee to help do research, because it's, the application is going to obviously take some, some work on our part, we're going to have to respond to that, and part of that response would have to be historic research, or other type of, of research. So it was suggested that So it was suggested that a fee be charged, and I think $25 was mentioned as a figure. So I think it would be the applicant, my take would be the applicant would provide that fee.
Who asked for demolition would pay the additional $25. And does $25 actually make a difference in research?
Well, it's going to take a lot more staff work than $25.
Okay, that's what I thought. I think that probably came from council, I believe. It didn't come from staff, the $25.
That's my recollection.
Okay. And my last issue is, it sounds like if this were to pass, it would be another month. And if we allow demolition permits issued before ordinance approval, we could have a run on demolitions over the next month. What is staff's opinion on that issue?
Well, after your last meeting, there was discussion about demolition delay and demolition review at the last committee of the whole meeting. There hasn't been any rush since that time. Honestly, it's hard to say. Once it got closer to an ordinance, it may have an effect on people applying for demolition permits, but just based on the past week or two, we haven't seen activity like that.
Okay, thanks. Now, open up for a motion. Is there a motion on the table? Charlie?
Well, I'd like to point out a couple of things here. I think, I have a question for our attorney. I think Dennis makes a good point that delay is not demolition review. And I think that's a key point here, and that may be why we've not seen a run on permits. The question I have is, given that it is delay, and this is for Ron, given that it is delay that we're looking at, is there any reason we couldn't also, in addition to these 1,023 properties that we've defined, also define some geographical areas based on the perceived historic nature of a neighborhood? You know, maybe a four-by-four block area, or a 10-by-10 block area, or something like that, because that area isn't surveyed, yet we know that it does contain a need to be surveyed?
Would there be some allowance for some due process in there for the homeowners that are contained within this proposed area? And would there be some sort of hearing process? How would you, what would that look like to you?
Well, I mean, I would, I would look to staff. If that was a necessary component, even, you know, given that this is demolition delay, not demolition review, you know, it strikes me that we really don't need to go to the level of specifying every single property. If it's were reviewed as it is in other communities, then I would agree that we'd need a very good survey, but we don't have the survey that we really need to get done. Question for Robert that I'm going to ask in a minute is basically, you know, what would it take to finish the survey? You know, that's, that's probably staff and money, obviously, but I still, you know.
So you mean as an interim measure?
As an interim measure, yeah, till we finish out the surveys of the city that we really need to, to do this right, we need a complete list. We don't have that right now. In the meantime, can we, you know, can we add historic East Urban, for example?
You know, I would need to do some research to answer that question. I mean, my, my general thought is that no, it would not be a problem, but, you know, I would not feel comfortable rendering a definitive decision unless I was able to go back and research the issue, so I'd be happy to do that for you.
Brandon, you had your hand up before. Did you?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we send this to the November 5 council meeting, and schedule the requisite public hearing, so that we could enact the ordinance that evening.
Motion from Brandon, a second from Charlie, third discussion. Go ahead, Brandon.
I guess I'll just make a few comments. I would be interested to hear from other people about the MOR district. I think of any of the possible changes, that idea of including the MOR, to me seems pretty important, because that's an area where we really do have, and Charlie, you might be thinking the same way because of your question, we really do have some significantly historic properties. They're residential, it's really mostly not, not commercial activity, and we would want to save those properties, I think. Of the sort of other, that's to me the most important way to expand it. I think if legally we have to stick with the surveys, then we have to stick with the surveys, and part of our motion before was to do more surveys, and, you know, we asked staff to be expanding the surveyed area, and I think we have to move forward with that. But if legally we can't, we can't just expand the area without doing the surveys, then we wait to do the surveys. So I'm ready to support this in, in basically the form it was brought to us.
Charlie?
I'd like to amend it, if possible, to include the MOR and a subset of, and this is something Dennis would have to help me on, a subset of historic East Urban neighborhood that hasn't been appropriately surveyed until such time that the surveys are completed. And that would be language I would ask staff to insert into this ordinance. So that would be, that would be my motion.
Yeah, that's a motion. I would second that motion.
A motion from Charlie, and a second from Dennis, and it's my understanding the motion is to include the MOR in this ordinance, and to include a selected portion of East Urban to be worked out with staff and Dennis, the council member from that area.
Until such time that surveys are completed within these.
Until such time that surveys are completed in that area. Okay, a motion is, a second, Dennis, and then we'll, actually, can we hear from our attorney, and then we'll hear from Dennis?
I just want to clarify something. Would there be some sort of sunset provision then in the ordinance, that once the survey was completed, then that designated area was no longer?
That's correct, yeah.
So there would be some sort of language as a sunset, that once that survey was complete of those properties, then that designated defined area would?
Literally, it could happen block by block or house by house within, within the area, I think.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dennis, then Robert.
Well, I'd like to speak in favor of that concept, partly because indeed, from looking at the map, only a few properties in East Urban have even been included in the survey, and no attention has been really put by any of the surveyors on the east side of town. And we do know that it is one of the oldest historic neighborhoods. And there is this about it, we didn't talk necessarily about the, about the age of the appropriate, the appropriate age of the house to be considered for the delay. Currently, the ordinance says 75, 75-year-old home. Now, recently, we've heard testimony that it's basically a state benchmark that properties that are 50 years meet the requirement of being historic. Looking at demolition ordinances, and also there's a national demolition ordinance that I reviewed, also stated 50 years is an appropriate benchmark. So it could be, I mean, it depends. I know that if we go to 50 years, it includes a lot more homes, and maybe there's a compromise, maybe a 60-year threshold would be a compromise between 50 and 75, it might be less attainable. I don't know if it's worth talking about like that, but I think we should consider whether, whether the, the age of the houses to be surveyed and protected by a demolition delay is, is low enough.
Lynn?
I'd like to know, how is staff going to handle the volume? Or, you know, how do you guys propose that you deal with this time-wise to make sure that we meet the 45 days, or maybe even sooner, or?
Well, we would, obviously, we're going to work out administrative requirements about how it's going to be handled internally. We're going to require really good coordination and, and communication between the different divisions, like Planning Division and Building Safety Division especially. And we'll have to work out the details.
Do you have any estimate of, like, time per demolition delay application, or, you know, whatever we're going to call it?
Well, the work for demolition delay, just the resources, the manpower for that is a lot less than the demolition review, which essentially turns every case into, every application into a case.
But for delay, what do you think?
I don't, I don't know the number, don't know the number of staff hours, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can handle that.
They'd be saying it's not going to be a problem.
Right. The one sort of caveat for that is that it also sets up, demolition delay also sets up an expectation that there may be negotiation to take place, that if there's a delayed period, if it's a property that's, some people feel has merit, a landmark application can be made, that's one avenue, but it also sets up an expectation that someone will get in and also negotiate and try to find an alternative use for it. So that may be a second result of this, that expectation, that could require a lot of work, potentially.
Okay. The mayor, and then Dennis. I'm sorry, Robert, no, I'm sorry, Robert first, and then the mayor, and then Dennis. I'm sorry, I overlooked you.
Thank you. Well, I would like to ask the question to Robert as to, the council expressed a certain vision of how this thing should be, and the inclusiveness, as we've discussed it over time, has included a lot of things. It approached downtown on a lot of things. The other issue that was raised, as I recall, was the artistic component. How do you, as a staff member, envision this two years down the road? This whole process? Are we going to have enough people to really make that a reality, or we're just stabbing in the dark?
Are you talking about the Royer District?
Royer District.
Okay.
They talked about including the historical part, the artistic elements as well, and in bringing that all in together as one, one entity. How are we going to do that in the next couple of years?
Did you want to field that question?
I'm trying to talk into the mouse.
Talking to the other mouse.
I think when we talk about resources, I probably should try to answer on the, because I think this is a resource question. The demolition delay is just the procedure of when we issue a permit, and that is not difficult, given the number of demolitions we have every year. That doesn't, that's not going to impact the staff time, the coordination, as Robert mentioned, and we don't think that will be a problem. What will be potentially time-consuming are a lot of these initiatives that we've had in recent council meetings will involve the same staff, and we need a sense of priorities. We heard five or six items from historic preservation incentives. We heard five or six items from the Royer District. Now, we're talking about speeding up surveys and surveying parts of historic East Urban. So these are, and then with, part of the delay that people should understand, it is not demolition review, but it provides sufficient time for a landmark to designation, or nomination, rather, to put that demolition on hold and perhaps prohibit the demolition. So it will increase the number of cases, likely. So we'll have more historic cases, and we do want more landmarks. That's what this all started with. We've got our surveys, we've got the Royer District, and it's grown, I mean, it's a fantastic idea. We have the incentives. We talked about five or six different incentives. We have two major birthdays coming up. So basically, and these wonderful ideas, most of them, you know, the ones that we're not recommending from a staff standpoint, this could pretty much keep the whole department busy, but we also have Menards and our subdivision ordinance update, and our corridor plans, and the Philo Road upgrades, and all our important projects downtown, our Tiff Projects, and our farmer's market, and, you know, there's lots of other things we're doing in construction activity, Crystal Lake area plan. So at some point, I guess what I'm saying, you know, we'll need another council's, you know, prioritizing session, and right now it just seems like historic is becoming a real focus, but these other needs are still there. I don't know if that helps.
Thank you. Mayor, and then Dennis, and then Lynn.
Just to put it in perspective, on 50 years versus 75 years, right across the street, Lincoln Square, what is the designation for that? It's, it's got some kind of historic designation, but it's not more than 50, much more than 50 years old.
Robert can chime in, but it's on the National Register, and it was unusual to be a modern building, so architecturally significant ones that are modern are beginning to be recognized. I think we, we talked about 75 years, because we're looking at our housing stock, and what begins to be significant historically tend to be older than 50, maybe closer to 100, but we went with 75, and we're just trying to narrow our universe to limit the impact of the delay ordinance on the community. Is that?
Okay. What I was trying to get at was that, I understand what Lynn is saying, we don't want, we do have all, and Robert pointed this out too, we do have conflicting goals here, but I think that we want to have infill, we want to have high-quality designs, but the delay just gives an opportunity that if it is architecturally significant or historically significant, then there's a little breathing room, that some research can be done on it.
That's the theory.
I think I cut off Robert there. Did you want to say something?
Robert, go ahead.
Well, just on the 50 years, the National Register of Historic Places, they use 50 years as the minimum threshold to be eligible. It doesn't mean if you're over 50 years old, you're automatically historic, but that's just the minimum eligibility requirement. There's some exceptions to that, for instance, properties of national significance, say the Central High School in Little Rock, and other, the site of assassination of President Kennedy, and, and other sites, including Lincoln Square Mall, it was determined to be of national significance, and it's National Register nomination, so it was approved, even though it's slightly less than 50 years old.
We have a lot on our plate for tonight, so I just want to remind the committee that we're on our first agenda item, and we need to move forward with this. Dennis, go ahead.
Okay, and I think that if, if it's true, we're going to have a public input session, we're going to be able to have a lot wider range of talk about this, and maybe get some significant feedback about, for direction, too. I just want to point out that, that even though there may be currently 1,020 houses that have been surveyed, and there may be as many or more that have not, which perhaps truly do deserve to be protected at this point, again, the only, we're really only concerned about the number of houses that come up for demolition permitting, and in the last couple of years, it has not exceeded 28. And so we're having this, this great, great concern about time and energy, and yes, we are casting rather a large net for protection, but the actual incidences, where we have to employ the staff time to protect or discuss about the protection of a particular building, is only comes up when the permit is, is requested. And again, not even probably half of those buildings have true significance, they may be just common houses or something, so there won't be the question of preservation of every single house that is proposed for demolition. It's unlikely, I think. And so in actuality, the number of houses that we'll probably be concerned about is going to be more like 15 a year, and that is not an undue burden to our town for requesting that a review happen or a delay happen, to give a little breathing space, to have a little discussion. So I just want to point out, in perspective, and also I'd like to say that many of the surveys that have been done in the past have been done by students, not the staff. They've been submitted by students at the University of Illinois, who've been directed to do surveys by their instructors in the urban planning department, and have not taken any staff time at all. It's also possible that a neighborhood organization could complete missing links within a survey and submit the appropriate documentation. So it's somewhat a, in this leading concept, that staff would be required to do all the surveying. Indeed, I think they would likely do almost none.
Okay, so we have a motion of amendment on the table to include the MOR in part of East Urban that still needs to be worked out until surveys are completed. We have a second on that. All those in favor, is there anyone else who wants to speak to it? Heather, did you want to speak to? Heather, did you want to speak to that amendment?
No, I thought that Brandon had made a motion before that.
He did. So that's the main motion, and we're just actually speaking on the amended motion. So all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
We have five ayes and two nays. That amendment carries, and then if there are any final comments on the main motion, I have just a brief comment. The first is, I'm glad we include the MOR, because it's the most, it's actually where Urbana started, was in the, or our district, it has some of the oldest homes. I don't actually think that this is the best tool. I think demolition review, it could set people's expectations up for thinking that this is going to prevent demolition, excuse me, demolition delay is going to set up people's expectations that this is actually demolition review, which it's not. And so I think that staff is correct in thinking that our focus really needs to be on historic preservation. Of course, we put forward a number of incentives there. I do think that this is a good kind of, if everything else hasn't worked, and there's a building that really needs to be preserved, and the community is mobilized and ready to do a lot of work to make that happen, this is a good idea, and it doesn't really cost that much to the homeowners or developers compared to the public benefit, but there certainly is a cost there. So, any other comments on this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
We have five ayes and two nays, and we will see that back November 5th. And in the meantime, there's some issues with Easterbanna being worked out. Perhaps, Dennis, you can work with staff on that issue, and then there's going to be public hearings as well, and it sounds like all the residents who are affected directly will be noticed of those public hearings, notified of those public hearings.
That's what we would propose, yes.
Okay, great. So next, we're going to move on to ordinance number 2007-10-116, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement for the consolidated fleet maintenance facility feasibility study, and we'll hear from Public Works on this.
I know you've got a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'll be very brief. There's a memo in the packets that explains in concept the change from when you last, when we last discussed this. The idea very simply was, we were originally in conversation with a number of local taxing jurisdictions that actually started as a Champaign County initiative. They since have gone their own direction and built their own facility. We considered this issue with Savoy, the Park District, City of Champaign, City of Urbana, and perhaps some others. At some point, everyone fell out except the City of Champaign and us. We came forward with our presentation to study a joint facility, not knowing where it'd be located, how it would be governed, any of that stuff, but knowing, of course, we had the MetCAD model that we could use as a guidebook if we needed to. During the process of drafting an RFP, in preparation for selecting a consultant, the university actually approached us with the idea that they thought they had perhaps some excess physical capacity, and it might be worth it to look at both cities joining with the university and the university facility for fleet maintenance operations. That went through a number of turns and twists, as it was discussed over time, resulting in the scope of work that's attached to the proposed intergovernmental agreement tonight. That has been through legal review, both in Urbana and Champaign. It's pretty straightforward on the 60-40 split, which is typical with Urbana and Champaign. I will say that something that came up after this memo into packets, at least the information did, and that is that when the City of Champaign considered it this week, as I understand it, they sent it to a study session sometime in November. I don't know if it's, if the date's been set for that or not. So that's not included in that. It was assumed that they would have approved it last week, but they didn't, so I want you to have that piece of information. And also, I feel compelled to comment on what you heard earlier tonight. That I know of, I didn't, frankly, I didn't come prepared with dates and times to be able to respond to those claims specifically. We have a regular group that meets in Public Works, the Labor Management Committee, so we have ample opportunity to discuss issues like this as they come up. I don't recall this particular version ever being discussed directly in that forum. I do have a recollection of Bill, Bill Gray, discussing it at the original time, probably, my guess is probably timed with the budget presentation, when we discussed it, you know, in this very room. So I would just say, I don't want to sound defensive here, I would just say that, you know, while I know of no formal notification to the bargaining unit, it hasn't been approached as a, in secret. In fact, it was discussed on a televised meeting in this very room, and discussed in any number of meetings and forums since then, so. But like I said, I don't know, in support of what Rick and Jason said earlier, I don't know of any formal notice to the bargaining unit.
Mayor, and then Heather, and then Robert.
I was interested that it's an agreement just between Champaign and Urbana, but you said the university was interested, so why is that university not included?
Well, the university isn't a financial partner in paying to study their own operation. The idea behind this concept is, you know, in simple terms, is does everybody treat everything the same way, and there's a variety of rates, and turnaround time, and convenience, all of which are functions of the study. So the cost of the study is based upon analyzing the operations, the fleet maintenance operations of all three jurisdictions, and seeing how they would mesh together, if it's even possible to mesh them together. So it's really looking at the university's operation. If they're, say, the study ran its course, and we decided to go forward with it, then the university would be a participant in any sort of modifications or improvements that were to take place.
At what point are you planning to talk to the union about this?
Well, I don't know that there's a formal schedule for that. I mean, we have regular monthly meetings, we certainly could discuss it then, or anytime between then and now. The idea that there are, should there be an indication that it's, that the study says it's a positive thing to do, which is by no means certain, you know, setting here today, that the study indicates that all the details can be worked out, and it makes sense, you know, there's going to be trade-offs, there's going to be a little give and take all the way through from everybody involved, but if the decision was made to go formal, or go forward rather, then certainly some sort of formal negotiation with the bargaining unit would be at the top of the list.
Heather. Well, clearly, this is, the ordinance is a feasibility study. I hear concerns of job loss, and I don't want to be a city that says that we're, you know, that we look at the union and say, we're for you, and then we do something that is totally against them, and it causes people who are in the union to lose their jobs. I think that would be a shot in the foot for us, and I just think that, first of all, the union obviously does, because their concern in that aspect need to be addressed before we can go forward on this. While it is just a study, I still believe that, wholeheartedly, that the union should be involved in this, no matter what.
Okay. Other comment, oh, Robert.
I just wanted to ask, within the context of the proposal, you said you had some models that you could use. Would those models include a formal evaluation from a union organization? Wouldn't it be inclusive as far as that model, in terms of what it's looking at?
The model I was referring to was MetCAD, and that being multi-jurisdictional, so it's several taxing districts cooperating. In order for anything to go forward, you would have to reach some concession with the bargaining unit. It would have to be mutual agreement, much like, I can't recall how many of you were involved at the time, but when the university didn't want to get out of the firefighting business, and the university firefighters became non, no more, no longer employees of the university, but employees of the City of Urbana, and so there, that was a specific item of negotiation.
Thank you.
Dennis?
So the background of our memorandum says that the committee is looking at the idea of conducting a fleet maintenance operation out of the university's facility, and so I guess some of the concern is, would our facility be shutting down? Would we be, perhaps, in the future, if this was going to go through, working or putting money into building a larger, expanded facility on university property?
Not necessarily. I need to go back a little bit in time, and I know you're not going to have a lot of patience for that tonight, so again, I'll try to be brief, but the, our original motivation for looking at this in the first place was the condition of our own fleet maintenance facility. That's, that is the highest facility item on the Public Works list, is we need to do something with fleet maintenance. We've approached it incrementally, it's baby steps in the past. We purchased some property across the street from the Public Works garage, but the fleet maintenance facility comes after other things. Public Works, you know, the Public Works facility master plan is sort of down on the priority list for spending. This, you know, there's a lot of demand for capital improvement money. This was a mechanism to perhaps accelerate that, without having to build a brand-new, standalone facility. So if we, if we go forward, even if we go forward with just Champaign, the concept was, we build a single facility, that that makes the most sense, and then we figure out how to, how to run both of them out, out of a single shop. Whether that be, it would be some sort of combined operation, but it might be two shifts. I mean, who knows? That's the point of doing the study, is the word, how does this, how can we make this make sense, so that both communities can afford it, and we can go forward, and we can enhance the operations?
Can I make a proposal? Mayor, I see your hand, just so we can move forward. It sounds like that Champaign isn't, it has us on a study session for November. There's some concerns that are legitimate on the table in terms of the union having access to information and conversation. So can I make a proposal that we, you know, we move this to November, to a committee of the whole meeting, where we can discuss it? At that point, the union might have some additional public input, after they've been able to meet with other representatives of Public Works. That seems like a reasonable way to move forward.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until the first committee of the whole meeting in November.
Okay. We have a motion from Lynn, a second from Heather, and Mayor, did you want to speak in addition to that? Okay.
I do.
Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I think originally, when we started talking about this, we were talking about a facility with no impact on staff, really. And so now, we have a situation where, you know, this might have an impact on staff, and they need to be included in the discussion. We need to make whatever appropriate steps need to be done to get there. And of course, you know, it's helpful that Champaign and Urbana are represented by the same union in that aspect, but the university is a separate entity, and that, I think that complicates things a lot. So I'm curious to, I think we should time this to study it at the same time that Champaign gets it on their agenda, so I'm flexible about when, in November, it comes to us.
Okay, Mayor, then Heather.
Okay, the first I heard of this, we were trying to talk with the county, which their facility is really close to our facility, and they kind of blew us off, I guess. So now, they seem to be interested again, because I talked to Pius Wibel about it, and he said that they might be interested. So my question is, would there be any effort to look at the county's facility as well as the university's?
The location of the county facility makes perfect sense for Urbana. It doesn't make much sense for Champaign. So I think the idea was that that facility location component is such a critical item in going forward. It's, you know, it would be, to use the flip side of that, if Champaign were to insist that the only location this could go is on the Metal Gold property in Champaign, then that would be much less attractive to us. So they have a similar reaction to going into the county's facility. So I would say, yes, it certainly is worth looking at, but I think that the group felt we had so much time invested, we needed to see this through with Champaign, but I would, my guess would be that the county facility would work out better for Urbana than Champaign, and in fact, may be a deal killer for Champaign.
Okay, Heather, did you?
I just wanted to reiterate the point that this is a high, that Public Works and the fleet maintenance is a high priority in Public Works. I remember when we were talking about the snow removal, and I know that the people in Public Works, you couldn't have people who speak more highly of the work that you do, gentlemen, so I don't think this is a stab in your back intentionally, and I think they will take your input and really listen to it. So I'm glad you came forward to say, hey, we need, we need to have a voice in this, too.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries. There's a proposal on the table to move the Lincoln Square amendment up to the top, since we have members of the public here to, on that. So any concerns about moving Lincoln Square to the next item on the agenda? Sorry to finance, we keep bumping you down the line. Okay, so if we could move on to actually, number 15 on our agenda, ordinance number 2007-10-114, an ordinance approving an amendment to redevelopment agreement with the New Lincoln Square LLC 2007. Tom Carino, our economic development coordinator.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Just a brief discussion on the staff report you have in front of you. This is a proposed amended redevelopment agreement with Lincoln Square. Some history on this. There is a redevelopment agreement existing, originally approved in 2004. It was for a two-phase development, phase one of which happened, and was an office component, phase two of which has not happened, which was a residential component. The residential component was not completed for a variety of reasons, but primarily centered around complications related to installing residential into a building that was not designed for residential, and that includes proximity of convenient parking, ingress-and-egress issues, and then just everyday living needs for someone, again, in a building that wasn't designed for residential. For this reason, the developer has not moved forward with the residential component. However, the complications that I've mentioned are solvable with money and time, and the developer is still interested in considering a residential component, but doesn't want to be obligated to do it as part of the development agreement. So they've requested that we take residential component out of the agreement, along with all timelines related to residential. Other changes in the, requested in the agreement are to, the developer is committed to do significant roof and HVAC improvements, and as an aside, has also done some improvements in the food court area. The, as far as the city's obligations, the city is continuing to offer a rebate of 100% of the increment generated by the project. At this point, the project has not reached its base valuation, which means there is no increment being generated. Therefore, the city has no immediate financial obligations, and would not have any obligations until a significant investment is made in the property to get above that base valuation. Other secondary items, the city is going to create as part of this agreement, a liquor license to attract a quality tenant for Lincoln Square. We're also reserving three tax increment finance redevelopment incentive programs for qualified tenants. We're also agreeing as part of this agreement to facilitate exterior signage for tenant exposure, and then there are a few other minor changes that are mentioned in your staff report. Basically, the amended agreement is designed to assist Lincoln Square in attracting quality tenants, offering them partnership opportunities, and also financing opportunities. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and the owners of Lincoln Square are here, if you'd like to ask them any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Charlie?
The only thing I don't understand, Tom, is towards the bottom of page three, your memo, it's a little bit confusing here. The third line of that says, generated by the project for eligible expenses up to $1,100,000. What is that referring to? Is that the valuation of the property, or are we reimbursing $1,100,000 in property taxes?
What that means is that once Lincoln Square starts generating increment, which again, it will not do immediately, once it starts again, it will, it will not do immediately, once it starts generating increment, we are agreeing to rebate 100% of that increment up to a maximum of $1,100,000. And that was included in the original redevelopment agreement and is really just a carryover from that, which means the agreement is in effect until 2022 with the expiration of the TIF. Over that time, we will rebate a maximum of $1,100,000 and no more.
Okay, but, but the agreement goes to December 2034.
That was a question that actually came up earlier today. Councilmember Bauer Socks questioned me about that. And the, the TIF expires in 2022 and therefore, our payments will go, not go beyond 2022. The 2034 date is actually the date at which Lincoln Square agrees to not file a property tax exemption application or they also, until 2034, they agree to continue to pay their property taxes in a timely manner. So, the 2034 date is really an obligation for Lincoln Square and it's related actually to the timeline of the parking agreement, which also goes to 2034. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Really, the city only has obligations through 2022. Lincoln Square has obligations through 2034.
So, does that mean the TIF rebate stops at 2022? The property taxes paid back?
Correct. The, our rebate of their property taxes go until they reach 1.1 million or 2022, whichever comes first.
Okay, Brandon.
I wanted to make a motion to send this to next week's council meeting with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
A motion and a second? Go ahead, Brandon, and then.
Then I just wanted to comment briefly. Yeah, I asked a lot of hard questions to Tom and I'm not going to rehash all of that now. I think the most important thing for me is I'm, I'm ready to support this. I think this is good. I congratulate the developer for doing some really important things, starting work on the roof, the flooring area in the food court. There are really important projects that are underway and I'm glad that we're requiring that they, they get finished up and that we're supporting those financially. I think there's still, this agreement is a good first step and I think there's even more to be done by the city and by the developer in making this property a success. There's still a long way to go. What I hear from people that they want is, you know, is retail back in downtown Urbana is a really vibrant facility that doesn't, you know, obviously the physical problems, things like the roof should get fixed, but a vibrant facility that has occupancy rates up and vacancy rates down and a place they can go back to shop again. So, that's really the ultimate goal that I just want us to keep in mind. I think these are good first steps and it's a start and there needs to be continued energy on the part of the city and the developer to make that happen.
Well, I would echo Brandon's sentiments. This is a great first start. I was born and raised in Urbana and so, I've seen Lincoln Square through a lot of changes. I've seen Baskin's men's clothing store come and go and I've seen shoe stores come and go and I've seen Bergner's and Herberger's and Carson Perry Scott come and go. And it's sad for me to go out to Marketplace Shopping Center and spend my money there for a birthday gift, a Christmas gift, whatever the case may be. When, when I was my kid's age, my parents could take me to Lincoln Square and we could have ball shopping and I would love to see that happen again. So, congratulations to you on trying to get, you know, occupancy up and let's continue to try to see Lincoln Square revived and great first step.
Dennis, and then Charlie.
I'm fine with this, with this way it's going, I guess. I'm sort of concerned, maybe I'm a little disappointed that the, the residential aspect, the pop-up on the roof, it didn't seem to take off the way we were hoping it would because bringing, you know, families to live and, you know, or young adults to live in apartments above Lincoln Square would vitalize, revitalize the downtown area in a very significant way and it would have been a very nice aspect of the project. And so much work went into the planning and the conceptualization that we saw about a year and a half ago, that I'm somewhat concerned that perhaps, once we agree to this new course, we'll probably not see that have a revitalization again. I don't know what that's going to be, but the purpose of, whether there's going to be hope for that component or not in the future. It certainly will be nice to see the, if, if this ordinance is going to really fix the roof, that's a real vital aspect for the salability of any property that's within the mall itself because when you walk in there as potential renter or leaser and you see that there are significant, you know, problems in the roof structure, you're probably less likely to want to enter into the agreements. I guess we can't control how the growth of a plant takes, takes place and so, we're seeing that there's new outcrops and unexpected locations and so, I'm just going to go with it. Good luck. We really would like to see this thing succeed. And I guess I have a question too about my, the one, maybe we can't talk about specific tenants, but I do have concerns for Lincoln Square, the historic Lincoln Hotel and completion of certain aspects of its facade and renovations that haven't, that look like they've been stalled for a long time. And I know that perhaps there's been a big change in that building and ownership of that building and I'm hoping that whoever is, has say over the management of it currently will take advantage of some of the opportunities that perhaps this money can go for.
I'm going to take a little bit of a contrarian view here. As much as I support the redevelopment of this property, I've been very disappointed at the pace of repairs to the facility. I mean, you can't rent a facility, you know, that, we did something a couple of years ago and, and we're just now getting around to seeing the roof repaired and the floor done and so on. These are things that should have been done 18 months ago. You can't get tenants in if you got a dirty, if you've got dirty bathrooms and a leaking roof. And, and so, I'm very disappointed at the pace of this. If it's not going to include additional residents to downtown, is it worth providing eligible expenses up to $1,100,000? I'm not sure I can support that without that residential component that was supposed to bring additional bodies to downtown Urbana. So, so I'm, I'm going to be asking more about this piece of it in the coming week, but I'd say that the pace that this has happened leaves me concerned that we're just spending good money after bad here. So, I'm, I'm very concerned about, you know, just the, the overall project at this point.
Mayor?
To respond to Dennis's comment, the historic Lincoln Hotel is a completely separate project. I mean, it's right next to Lincoln Square, but it's not included in this agreement. Correct?
I just have a couple of questions and comments. I also want to echo what Charlie said. I think having, I eat in Lincoln Square almost every day. Actually, they're great food, they have a great food court and two great options in the food court and also the art mart and Milo's and the Chinese restaurant are all good options for eating there and I eat there frequently. The, it's my understanding that the floor took much longer than, than the renters had expected at least. I'm concerned about tenant relationships. I'm concerned about how long it took for the roof to be repaired. I actually, like, lights were turned off, it was cold in the winter. There were, there were serious, I consider serious property management issues with this property during the time of this development agreement. I'm sorry to say. Today I went over there, I was eating again, great turkey sandwich at Pietro's and many of the storefronts were closed and it was 2:00 in the afternoon. And I don't understand why, I in some ways feel like we should be saying, you gotta keep the stores open, you know? You can't, you can't shut the doors, you can't shut the candy store, you can't shut the unique baby gifts. This should be part of it. It's not actually good enough to have retail tenants in this space and not actually require them to be open if this city's going to participate. So, that's a concern I have. There was a huge incentive with this, the $50,000 a year wasn't necessarily that big, but the parking was a big part of it. And we, you know, basically one tenant moved from one building to another building in downtown. It was great to retain that tenant, Health Alliance's roommates in downtown, but the residential piece was a really important component to that parking exchange and I'm disappointed to see that taken out. I understand the business considerations changed and I am privy to some of the conversations about parking and, you know, covered parking, et cetera. But I think that, I guess I would, you know, maybe like to hear more from, from Jim Webster on this issue of, of, you know, what the plan is for residential and why it didn't exactly work out so far, as well as the issue of closing hours and things. I do have a question, actually, I have two questions, which I think, Tom, perhaps you could answer. The first is, is there anything in our development agreement that prevents everything turning into an office space and us still paying up to $1,100,000? Not that that's going to happen, but is there anything that prevents it all just becoming office space?
There actually is a provision in our parking agreement that dictates the amount of, the maximum amount of office space in the project. And the reason it's in the parking agreement is because the fees that we charge for the parking are based on the fact that there will be a certain amount of retail and a certain amount of sales tax generating uses. So, it's in the parking agreement, it's, it's not in the redevelopment agreement.
Okay. That's helpful. And the second question I have is, I had brought up, the, the city, both with its arts initiative as well as its expanding public access, we're kind of shoved in two corners right now. We, I explored the issue of Lincoln Square being a place for the city to expand and part of this redevelopment agreement, including using some of the spaces or a space in Lincoln Square. And Miss, there was, Mr. Webster did reach out to me and we were trying to coordinate our schedules and haven't been able to really talk about that yet because I've been busy. But I did want to know if there had been some discussion on that topic because it seems like that's a great benefit to the people of Urbana. There is available space. It doesn't have to be the premium space, but it would be great to have a space that the city would be able to use for those purposes and we'd be able to kind of expand the services to the public and also help bring in additional foot traffic into the mall. So, I'm curious what the status of that is.
Well, you had mentioned that to me previously and I did have a discussion with Wade Franklin, the manager at Lincoln Square. And our discussions were that Lincoln Square would continue to facilitate the use of spaces in the facility for public art. They assisted when we were looking for a venue to display the Historic Preservation Art Contest and they allowed us to hang the art on the walls. When we were looking to post the, the Boneyard Design Study Boards, Lincoln Square gave us space to post those boards. And there are a variety of other instances when Lincoln Square has provided space for free for various operations. Now, I did talk to Wade about actually taking over a space for UPTV slash public art and again, we discussed the fact that they would continue to be very accommodating for free space around the facility, but didn't want to necessarily dedicate a single free space for our use. And I don't, I don't know if Wade had talked to you at all, I'm not sure if that's consistent with, with what we've discussed, but I think that's pretty consistent with what Wade and I discussed.
I would say that's, that's correct and thank you for having, taking the time and sharing questions, concerns. I think the concern about the housing is, is something that I want to clarify, that we aren't asking to completely abandon housing. We think we have a developer looking at it right now as a standalone separate issue project, but we, we don't, we don't want to be obligated to do it. It's quite complicated. Mr. Carino has explained some of the complications of the ingress egress parking. And sure, we could have put 20 units up there to meet that, the, I think the minimum number of units to meet for the development agreement without any problem, but that really, is that really going to bring a lot more vibrancy to the downtown and maximally, maximize the highest investees in the property? I don't think so and I don't think probably anybody really here thinks so. But, so we think that there's still a great potential there, infill, but there's, it's probably needs to be on a larger scale, maybe more vertical and, and maybe with a parking deck. Could we get this all done? Have gotten this larger scale project done within the timeframe? No, we could not. And, and part of the reason we're here is to, is take steps back to, like Mr. Smythe said, to correct some of the problems that we had, the facility. We're trying to put more money and resources into beautifying the property on the inside, outside and attract, than attracting tenants. So, we think it's very important to really get our house in order. We, it certainly wasn't any, we're trying, I mean, we're trying very hard. We think it's an important asset, we know it's an important asset to, to Urbana. We have a lot of events. We probably have 80,000 square feet of open areas people walk, have, I don't know how many events we have a year, but most of them are free. And sure, we did, some are intended to bring in foot traffic that helps the vendors, but others are just really to help the community.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, actually, one thing I'd written down here and failed to talk about was Park District and what their role could be in some of this. Really, when you stop and think about it, Lincoln Square is centrally located, walkable from a big portion of Urbana. It could be in some ways thought of as an indoor park when you've got all the walkers out there and so on. I think with some creativity, maybe talking to the Park District, some other, other folks, I mean, I know you were trying to get a, a liquor license type client in there. All those things would, might all mesh in developing essentially an indoor park with a commercial and, and office aspect to it. I think at this point, given the, the free parking out of town, you know, at the edges of town and the developments that are at the edges of town, you need to do something very different to bring in people and make this something that is a destination again. And, you know, you're not going to get a big box store in there, you're not going to get a, unless you could get Trader Joe's. You're not going to get a, a big, you know, anchor tenant, I should say, but, you know, something like Trader Joe's would, would generate something, would generate a lot of traffic. But, but I mean, you know, it's going to take something different to get people back in there. So, I would, I would strongly encourage you to keep thinking creatively, you know? If you want to tear down half of it and put in a parking deck and, and condos in there, which I think we've discussed, yeah, I think we've discussed that, you know, that concept. Maybe that's the way to go. Maybe you're right. And, and so, but I think, I think we do need to move a little faster on getting what's there fixed and, and coming up with some ideas on how to use the space better.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second to send this to council with a recommendation for approval. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? That carries. Thank you. Okay. Am I hearing that you want to take the Urban League now? Okay, because we have members of Urban League. Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it. Okay, we're doing this based on who showed up this evening for the, for council and I actually think that's a great idea. So, we're going to, if there are any concerns about talking about the Urban League, let's move to the number 12 and 13 and 14. We'll just take 12, 13, and 14. Are there any concerns with moving the agenda around in that way? Great, okay. So, we will address your concerns, you might be able to go home by 9:00. We'll hear from community development on these are in ordinance 2007-10-112, an ordinance approving an amendment to the Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement. This refers to the Urban League of Champaign County Development Corporation Lease Purchase Program for the fiscal years 06, for fiscal year 0607. We'll also hear a staff report at the same time for the next ordinance, ordinance number 2007-10-113, an ordinance approving an amendment to Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, also referring to the Urban League of Champaign County Lease Purchase Program for fiscal year 0708. Thank you.
At the August 24th CDC meeting, we reviewed a request from the Urban League to reduce the affordability period of their lease purchase program from 10 years to five years. Throughout the discussion at that meeting and the September meeting, they asked us to prepare those amendments. to prepare those amendments for you guys and were eventually approved. Just a little background, reducing the affordability period from 10 years to five years is only complicated by the fact that we need to reduce the amount of assistance per household because there's a maximum allowable for each affordability period. So we'd have to reduce the amount from $20,000 per household to $14,999. This request came from a lack of interest in the program when the affordability was originally changed from five years to 10 years. The Urban League and staff contend that the homes purchased for this program are considered starter homes and the 10-year affordability period tended to be an impediment to getting people interested in the program. Because they're starter homes, people were thinking, you know, I can move up, you know, once their situation improves, but knowing that they have to stay in a house for 10 years, you know, and might risk, you know, financial, having to pay us back if they leave before that was deterring people from participating in the program. At the September 25th CDC meeting, there was discussion as whether it was too advisable to reduce the assistance below $14,999 to assist, maybe increase the amount of people we're assisting. But we discussed and agreed that the 14,000 is a good amount for this particular subset of the population that we're assisting. We have other homeownership programs, but this one and the population that Urban League is working with are people with credit issues and that amount really was bridging the gap between what the banks were willing to lend and what these people can afford, you know, an affordable mortgage. The CDC voted unanimously to forward the ordinances to you guys, to the City Council with recommendation for approval. Jean Alge is here, if you have any questions for her or for me.
Great, Charlie?
I've moved to send items 12, 13 and 14, the two ordinances in the resolution.
It's just 12 and 13.
12 and 13, what's, oh, that's a...
14 is a different separate.
Oh, okay, sorry. Move 12 and 13 to council.
Hi, second.
We have a motion from Charlie, a second from Lynn, any questions? I have a couple of quick questions. The first is, it's my understanding the affordability period doesn't mean you have to stay in the home, it means that if you sell, you have to sell to someone within a certain income range, is that correct?
There's two ways that it works, that is one of the ways, and the other way is that you have to repay, repay some of the assistance that we provided to you and you can sell to whoever is able to buy it.
So you could either sell to someone who is within a certain income area, or you could sell to anyone and you have to pay something back?
Exactly.
Okay, so I just wanna clarify for that, 'cause it wasn't clear in the memo, it sounded like you had to be in the room, in the home for 10 years, that wasn't my understanding of how it worked. The second is, just with the numbers, it's unclear to me, it says prior to fiscal year 0506, the lease purchase program placed 41 families into home, and then since its inception during the year 0506, there were four. But I don't know if we're comparing apples and apples, it was 41 families in one year or it was 41 families in how many years?
It was 41 families, I believe, in three years.
Since 2001 to 2005, so four years, three years?
At least 10 to 12 a year.
Okay. 10 to 12 versus the four, okay, that helps me. I guess I am concerned, I'm gonna vote yes for this, because in a lot of ways, I respect the Urban League and their business practices and I think that you probably have a good sense on what your clients need. I will state that I'm concerned about creating homes that then don't, you know, they no longer have to be affordable to people within certain income group and we lose something as a community doing it that way. What it does look like we gain is that, particularly because the assistance goes down, that we could address two more clients and that is a pretty big benefit and, as a trade-off for that. But I guess, I have, you know, it's part of our bigger picture of affordable housing in some ways is, I still feel like we're, we're doing a lot, given federal mandates to provide affordable housing and I still think that there's a lot of people in the queue waiting for housing and both us and the Housing Authority are not addressing that need adequately. Any other comments? Dennis?
I just found it very interesting that, one of the reasons why people were interested in not maintaining their home for a long period was that they are using them as starter homes and then moving up the ladder to purchase larger houses. And I always thought, I guess my concept was that, that a person who was qualifying for one of these homes was basically having, facing kind of a long-range financial, you know, affordability questions. And I'm, I think it's interesting to hear that, rather than becoming their home of residence for perhaps a very long time, perhaps for the duration of the rearing of children, that they're choosing to move up and purchase yet a larger house. So are we seeing then that these families are more affluent than we kind of expected because they're able to do this process so quickly?
I'll have Jean address that as well, but I think that this specific group of persons that the lease purchase program is assisting are people that, on the outset, are bankable, that maybe do have jobs and, you know, are at the, you know, certain income range, but because of their credit history are unable to purchase homes. So that maybe in a few years, three to five years, they're able to, you know, working with Urban League, change those credit issues with their, you know, income increasing. You know, these are smaller two and three-bedroom homes that at that time, within five years, a lot of times they're able to move up. And it may not be a significant jump, but, you know, somewhere from, you know, a two-bedroom, you know, 80 to $100,000 home to something a little bit, you know, bigger or better is what they've been able to do.
And Janelle actually answered that question perfectly. However, the price range that we usually purchase a house in is typically between 75 and 80. So these are very small homes, they're people that have just coming into homeownership, they're just starting their job, they may get promoted on their job, they have a family and they do outgrow the homes within five years. The 10-year time period was just, it was too tight for some people. Most of them do stay there past five years. We don't have a lot of people and Janelle can tell you, they haven't released a lot of liens for the people that have been in there for five years. Most of them do stay there and exceed the five-year time limit. It was just hard to market to people, when you're talking about a house that's gonna cost $75,000, when the market is saying that you can get a three-bedroom home now for $90,000. The market wasn't matching the clients that we were seeing and we were having a real hard time trying to sell the program to them.
Well, am I, am I correct in saying that if they're able to purchase a home through this, that then they're able to maybe save some money and actually, if they're purchasing it through this program, then they're able to maybe spend more time working to have more hours? And so, when Robert raises a question, are they becoming, or Dennis raises a question, are they becoming more affluent? Well, they might have more opportunities because they're involved in this program.
And we hope they will be, become more affluent, once they run budgeting scales and save their money.
Right, right.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries. Thank you, Ms. Alge for coming, appreciate it. Let's see, next, we will take the number 14, resolution number 2007-10-021R, resolution approving an amendment to the City of Urbana and Champaign, Urbana, Champaign County, Urbana, Home Consortium Fiscal Year 2005 to 09 Consolidated Plan. That was mouthful.
Before you on the agenda here, it is a resolution approving an amendment to our consolidated plan and it's needed because of newly required information that needs to be included in the con-plan. How we get the information is from HUD, who regularly publishes notices about regulatory updates and new requirements. And we recently reviewed the con-plan and found that certain language was not included in the con-plan that needed to be in there. And this information or language involved addressing the housing needs of victims of domestic violence. Even though the city has been providing services and grants to the local domestic violence programs, we still need to put this information into the con-plan and so needs to be amended. On the attached to the memo is a copy of the proposed amendment. We added information to a table and text regarding domestic violence victims. Per the requirements for the consolidated plan, we did have the amendment available for public review for 30 days and we had a public hearing on September 20th and the amendment was also reviewed by the Community Development Commission at their September 25th meeting and they voted to forward the amendment to council with a recommendation for approval.
Charlie?
I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Hi, second, Matt.
There's a motion from Charlie, a second from Dennis, any discussions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries. So, Community Development can go home and last but not least, the Finance Department, we have a number of items to hear from. So we are gonna start at the top of the list for Finance with a discussion of the website redesign report. We'll hear from Bill Dejarnay, who's our IS manager. The committee members?
Gentlemen and scottles, I had a short, two-page memorandum going over a couple of issues, kind of tried to get a brief update of where we're at and what we want to accomplish. We've reviewed the 2007 top municipal sites according to the Center for Digital Government, there's a number of reviews, but this one's, this one's a fairly good one. I've ranked the top five are there in order and the following finalists are there, also the populations and some style items. I have them up here and I'll go over some of the issues real quickly. The primary marks of these websites include a front page that trends towards web 2.0 premises and listings. The web 2.0 premises simply puts an increased emphasis on a quick transfer of information between users and providers through many different mediums. Let's look at the listings issues very quickly. The one up here, City of Riverside, when we talk about listings, if you'll notice, just long lists of things, we're gonna jump right into doing business and you'll see lists. Let's jump to Louisville, we'll go to business, lists. Las Vegas, they went to the trouble of a few categories within their lists, another good list. City of Collins, the departments, they don't even hide the list, they're just lists. Endless is endless. And then let's jump out to Tampa, get the business guide, lists. Now, there's a number of reasons for this, let's jump to this. You'll even notice on the front pages, they get into quite a bit of lists, but we're gonna talk about a couple of other issues as I bring that up. Only four of these top 10 use RSS feeds and none have easily discernible blogs. Primarily, they're switching from nesting menus and layered webpages to dense lists. The websites have recognized the fact that as they move from department-centric to services-oriented, the ability to combine and categorize topics and services in a manner that makes sense to the users has become very difficult. Currently, the solution of choice is very loose categories at best, with long lists of services and information hidden behind a visually appealing front page. I believe that the essence of this concept is if you can't click what you can't see. This dictates the use of large lists, concise titling, cross-categorization and a robust search engine with accurately titled results and clustering. Interestingly, most of these websites use third-party search engines and the results are fairly weak, no clustering, and few of them do real adequate cross-categorization. What I mean by cross-categorization is, you can't have something only on one list in one spot, because people don't really have a clean grasp of what exactly they're looking for or where to look for it, so you're just gonna have to basically allow them to find it in a number of locations. And that's fine, it's not difficult to do, but just the assumption is it's gonna have to be out there in a number of spots. The main feature that makes all of these websites attractive is the inclusion of current items across the broad topical nature and format. To generate this large volume of ever-changing information, departments, the departments must drive the content. It's also critical to create a mechanism to quickly incorporate information from the users of the website. This may include videos sent by citizens, directed blogs with departmental staff providing support as necessary, depending on each department's area of expertise. I believe we're ready to create this site, but these changes are a huge shift. Our current website supports approximately 3,000 webpages, of which 1,200 of them are the city code and about 12,000 content items. We'll basically be gutting the current websites that now exist, so at this point, what I'm trying to do is garner some consensus before we tear this thing completely apart. I'd like the council to think about the following feedback for me. For those of you that are interested, look at the websites that are included on this, on this listing, pick your top three and explain why. The more specific would be, the answers the better. Evaluate the look and feel, but before you go to the website, have a couple of specific items in mind that you would like to find, such as council agendas, paid parking tickets, et cetera. That way, you'll evaluate the site based on how it handles the information, not just how it looks. We received a number of excellent comments from the council on the website in general and through the survey and I believe following, the following will incorporate all these general issues, but it'd also be beneficial to confirm that our direction and methodology will be consistent with council goals. Without any other specifics to the contrary, we expect to do the following. These incorporate characteristics of top-ranked sites, we're gonna go to a listing style. It's just faster, cleaner. Progressive chase and dynamic content from static content. If there's information to be garnered of historical nature, we're gonna push it deep. If it's not clickable and usable immediately and current, then it's gotta go way deep into the system. Incorporate a more visually enticing front page, we may need to have a consultant help us with that. That's just, that's just a fact of life. We talked earlier in May about tying this with economic development, that's gonna, that's gonna take skill sets that are probably not in-house. We need to expect a greater commitment to contact by departments. Incorporate the following items that are not currently being done consistently by top sites. I believe these need to be done, move us to the top tier of cities and provide information and services to the citizens. Incorporate feeds and blogs. Most of the top sites don't do that. I still think this community's a high-tech community, we can garner great benefit from that. We'd like to incorporate citizen feedback mechanisms for all things Urbana. Surveys, blogs, direct contacts, citizen-submitted videos. If we want a vibrant front page, it's gotta be very current. The way to do that is a quick give and take. We want a more finely tuned search engine and we want to tie together a number of clustering features. The websites we've seen do not use clustering, we believe clustering is quite beneficial. An example would be, I'm searching for ordinance, I'm searching and this word kicks up a bunch of hits in a number of categories, including ordinances. Well, those ordinances should all be pulled to one title group, ordinances, so if I'm not looking for an ordinance, I'm not looking at 75 hits in an area that I just frankly don't care about. So clustering will help us with that. There's a website called Clusty, I think, that kind of shows those techniques. Allow users to select their favorite webpages, allow their front page to direct, create direct paths inward. A few websites do that. I think, given the nature of how our users are, it would be beneficial. We have some people that come all the time and they come for three or four things. To allow them to drag those things to their front page would be beneficial. For the other people that come, they're there because something in the last 48 to 72 hours has piqued their interest, so it's gotta be very current, right there in front of them, it's gotta be there on the front page. You've gotta very quickly be able to find that. And that's a short-term turnaround, that will have a huge impact on departments to provide that information. I also believe, though, if we can tie the citizens back into our website, that will help make a more current flavor to the website itself. I think we can do it 90 to 120 days. But it's a big change, we will tear apart everything we've got. Most of the webpages that existed now will go away, they're not, they don't, they don't meet the... that existed now will go away. They're not, they don't meet the structures that everybody's using. They're not easy to maintain, and frankly, they're filled with a lot of static information that's not worth maintaining at the high-content levels. The high-content levels are, if you look at these, two to three layers deep maximum. If you're going deeper than that, then you're not getting it done. Drop-down menus are pretty much gone. There's a lot of sidebar activity, and even the sidebars are filled with lists. So, I mean, that's, I think, where I'm at right now, is unless you've got some other specific items, based on what I've got, this is what we're going to run with, notwithstanding the issue of the front page design, per se. And I think that's another key issue that needs to be addressed from a couple of different perspectives.
Brandon, and then Robert.
Okay. Thank you, Bill, for your report. Let me give my brief feedback. I think comparing us to our peers is really good, and you have some really neat ideas here, but my impression is actually that some of the things we've asked for and that we want to do are smaller than kind of the huge shift you've talked about, the "let's get rid of everything and start over." To me, the top two things that we've discussed and that I didn't see quite reflected here were, number one, fixing the homepage and the site loading time with the Java applet piece. That's just a technology that makes the loading time of the site really long, and we've talked about that a long time. And, secondly, updating the visual look so that the site has a little bit of a fresher look, that it fits with our marketing campaign and our identity, but without doing a complete restructuring of all the navigation and the levels and how we break up the information, but really just giving it a new skin and a new look that conveys the marketing messages we want to be conveying about Urbana. To me, those are the top two changes that I think we've talked about before and that I think are the priorities, and that that can be done without kind of the huge shift. It's nice-
No, absolutely, I agree wholeheartedly, that those two things can be done very easily. That's a given.
Mayor, and then Charlie.
And Robert, later.
It's because you're right here to my left. Actually, Robert first, then the mayor.
I'm a nice brownberry, and you're just missing me.
I don't know why.
I got a couple of questions.
You said I'll call you Dennis, okay?
I got a couple of questions. One, recently, I heard some issues about blogs as it relates to elected officials, and what we can and cannot do with regard to using a blog. And I think we need to investigate that and let council know what the parameters would be for that, and I think they have legal ramifications as well.
The primary issue for blogs, notwithstanding just even from the council member perspective, is we've got a number of topics that get discussed over a period of time. The bicycle pass and changes in that is an item that behooves itself to have a blog, so people can have comments, add comments, they get followed, they get edited. There's a number of projects like that that touch us, come and go. You know, instead of a long-running blog, this is a project that's critical, it's current, people want to get some information, they want to exchange information, they want to get their point heard, they may not want to come to a council meeting at night, but they've really got some issues they'd like to make. That works very well. It takes a department impact, because you have to have someone knowledgeable in that project to oversee that blog, help manage that and turn that, but it's not just necessarily to be used as a forum for a councilperson or a mayor, although they've been used in that manner, but I think just on a project basis, it also has some real benefits for us.
Okay.
Mayor, and then Charlie.
I'd like to see the front page have what's unique about Urbana. We're supposed to be one of the top-ten green communities in the country. We just had a neighborhood that's in the top-ten neighborhoods. You know, we have a hometown award for a park. I think those things ought to be highlighted, and maybe the connection to Abraham Lincoln picture of the statue in Carl Park. But, you know, I think there ought to be something very beautiful and attractive on the front page.
Charlie, go ahead.
Bill, maybe I'm just tired and cranky tonight after spending eight days on the road here. I did get to sleep in my own bed last night, which was nice, so I'm probably less cranky than I was yesterday. But, to me, you know, we asked for this stuff over a year ago, we put all these suggestions out there, and here you're saying that you can get this done in ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty days. Why wasn't this done ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty days ago, a year ago? You know, and I've been complaining about the Java for, since I started back on the city council, and, you know, the problem is, it works great in the building. If you're here in the building and the server's right here, it works great. If you're a public, if you're a member of the public and you're on dial-up, the site never comes up, it takes five minutes. If you're on a good DSL connection, it takes thirty seconds to forty-five seconds. I mean, there's no excuse for that, and we asked for that over a year ago. So, I'm just real frustrated that all of the changes that we've mentioned here haven't taken place a year ago. And here we are, you know, being asked to do, to provide even more feedback on stuff. I don't have time for it. And, you know, I do this, you know, and, okay, and then let me throw out one thing, you know, you've got some ideas. Before you jump into doing any of this stuff, you need to do some usability studies with real people, real, you know, and they can be pen, you know, they can be pencil, or they can be paper, you know. Paper usability things, you don't even have to do the website, you know, you can put pieces of paper of what you want down on something and ask somebody to do, you know, can you do this, you know, how would you go about doing this, this, and this, you know, and have them do it with paper. There are people on campus that can help you design that kind of thing. It doesn't take that much, but really, if we want to have a site that's effective, it needs to go through usability testing.
I just, I have some comments, which is that I feel like where it's the first square, and we were supposed to be here three or four years ago when we put this on the goals. And this, to me, is not a plan. And I do this professionally, I know what a plan looks like. It's a jumble of ideas, the last time it was a jumble of ideas, and it needs to be a plan that we could make into an RFP and hire a consultant who does the marketing piece, which there was pretty much unanimous support for us to hire a consultant, help us with marketing, to do the design piece, and to do architecture. We should not do architecture, we can't do it because we're too close to it. That team needs to do design, marketing, and architecture minimally, and they can provide technology recommendations. I think we have the in-house team to do some of that technology work. And, so, this, I don't think council is the appropriate guide. I actually don't want council to give input. I think that the users should give input. Council is not the body that should be providing input, and it should be done in a professional way, using best practices of building a website. This is not best practices. So, I would like to see, I think we're great on content. The city is fantastic on content. We have so much content, we have videos, you can't find any of it, but we are fantastic on it, and we have a great workflow for that. So, I would like to make a motion that in, at the next committee of the whole, we have a better-defined picture of what that RFP is going to look like, and we have a proposal to hire a consultant to do design, marketing, architecture, and some technology consulting. I have a motion from myself, and second from Charlie. I did, I had two things. We do need final ordinances online. We don't have final past ordinances. We have drafts of ordinances that creates a lot of confusion when you're looking back to see what was passed. Maybe I'm looking in the wrong place. So, it could be I was just looking in the wrong place and it is online. And then also resolutions by name rather than number. There's this crazy usability of, you have to download the agenda, which is a PDF, and then you have to look at it and find the number. It usually doesn't work on Mac. The Java takes a minute and a half to load. All of those sites that you showed us are all so much better. They're just in a completely different mood than the City of Urbana website. So, I consider this to be, it's frustrating to see something that's just another list of ideas six months when actually I heard that we had a plan, and we were told that this was what we were going for with the plan. So, I want to see in two weeks a work plan with an RFP and prepared to hire a consultant, and it's not going to take ninety or one-hundred-and-twenty days, I can guarantee you that. But, we might have it in six months. Any other comments?
Dennis?
I like your fire. I agree, and I have looked for specific information and totally got lost with a flood of ordinances that had nothing to do with my search. I think that the search engine is very confusing and direction, more refined direction for the search, a very powerful search engine based on words rather than numbers, and more effective would be extremely helpful to everybody.
It also needs to be cross-platform. It has to be, it has to work in multiple browsers. I mean, anybody developing websites today, you know, tests against the three or four major browsers on different platforms, and it's not that hard. If you write good web code, I've got two people who do it day in and day out, and they're able to generate great-looking websites regardless of the browser that the client is using. That's been one of my frustrations, because the website looks terrible in my preferred browser, and that happens to be the preferred browser for seventy percent of campus.
Any other comments before we vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Carrie's. Next, we're going to hear a presentation on financial report. Thank you, Bill.
I handed out the memo, rest of the press, and the backside, the fourth. Just touch base on that topic. The reason I did this, of course, is the property tax levy is coming up in a decision about a month, so it's going to be important to understand our financial situation, both this year, next year, and the next couple of years. Remember, number one, we had a tremendous year financially last year. As far as our revenues and seeing our expenditures, we had about 1.32 million, and that was about 465,000 better than what I projected when we did the budget last June. And why is that? Number two, it's because our total revenue grew 8.6 percent. That 8.6 percent growth was mainly due, though, to unusual revenue increases that were responsible for almost seven percent of that 8.6. And what do I mean by unusual? We had new sales taxes from Walmart, Walgreens, Aldi, O'Briens. That total increase was 4.3 of that 8.6 percent, just due to those. We had additional sales tax from increasing the home rule, one-quarter percent during the year, a partial. That was another 1.4 percent. We had had the multifamily rental inspection fee, oh, thank you, that was another 0.6 percent. So, if you add these unusual revenue growths that are not going to occur every year, we're not going to have a Walmart open up every year and O'Briens every year, unfortunately, then our revenues on a recurring basis only increased 1.4 percent. So, in some regards, that was not a very good year for us. Some of the, number, paragraph three, I did go through and list some of our most important revenues, gave you the total and the millions that they generate. Sales tax is our largest, about 32 percent of all our revenues, about 8.8 million of the 27 million in the general fund. Property tax, while we have a diverse revenue breakdown, unlike the school district that property tax financed probably 75, property tax still is almost a quarter percent of our revenue, so it's still a very important revenue producer and item for us. In our current year budget, '07-'08, we are projecting revenues to increase 3.1 percent, and that included maintaining the property tax levy at the same $1.29 rate we have right now. Expenditures were budgeted to increase 6.8 percent. So, you see, there's a difference right there of 3.7 percent. We're spending 3.7 percent more than we're taking in this current year if our estimates and the budget come out. How can we do that? Well, we're drawing down on that 1.2 million surplus that we had last year. Can we do that again next year? Not unless we have another 1.2 million surplus, so then that's going to be very doubtful. For the future, I can only reasonably project a total revenue increase of around 3.5 percent, and that, again, includes keeping the property tax levy at the same $1.29. My projections did use a minimum of 4.7 percent on service-level expenses, and that was to keep, just to keep the current service level in place that we have right now. And that is because we have already a number of labor agreements in place that control our personnel costs. I have projected a 10 percent increase in our employee health insurance. That's somewhat questionable, whether we can do that. 6 percent increase in pension costs, I think that's pretty realistic. Pension costs are coming back down because the stock market has been done well the last three years. And maintaining the same dollar level in supply and contractual, and so that's difficult to do. So, it's going to be difficult to get that 4.7 percent expenditure. Even if we did that 4.7 and we had revenues of 3.5, we're going to be spending about half a million dollars more every year than we're taking in. And, for example, on expenditures, the last two years, our budget expenditures increased 6.9 percent and 6.8 percent respectively. There is some new development, however, it may take a while before we can experience the income in the general fund from this new development. The Meyer store is scheduled to open September of '98, about a year from now, with the first sales tax being received in January of '99. However, the city has committed to spend 1.5 million dollars in related capital improvements for Myers, and that money is not in the capital improvement plan, it's not in any fund anywhere. So, we're going to have to, unless we borrow money and find a way to pay that back, we're going to have to dedicate the sales tax and revenues from Meyer to pay off that 1.5 million. They, Myers, agreed to loan the city the one-and-a-half million at 0 percent interest, but they want to be repaid in three years. If they're going to be repaid in three years, then we will not see any sales tax for three years. We do have an option of going to a bank and spreading that three years out borrowing, and spreading that three years out over ten years or a longer period of time. That would be a little different for us. We've not had to borrow for those types of purposes in the past. It would give us some, you know, sales tax more immediately, but in the long, the end result would be we'd have to, of course, pay more, because we'd be paying interest on that 1.5 billion as in addition to the principal. The Menard store is sort of the same situation. It's due to open about a year later. I think that we're probably going to end up borrowing 3.5 million dollars to do the capital improvements to do the Menards upfront, to do the Menards. They, again, have agreed in principle to loan us that money at 0 percent interest, and they want to be repaid over ten years. So, we do receive a small amount of sales tax. Again, that is not in the capital improvement plan anywhere, there are no dedicated monies to do those capital improvements, so we have to borrow or use the sales tax generated and property tax generated from Menards to pay for those, that repayment. So, we will receive a small amount of sales tax quicker than we did in the Myers project, but it's not going to be a lot of money yet because we're going to have to repay that debt. In addition to those negatives, I did list some other contingencies that I know of, and this list is not comprehensive by any means, or is it prioritized in any way. During the budget process, we did hear a presentation by Bill Gray and Doug Miller, city engineers, about a capital improvements plan, in which I think they laid out a pretty good argument, at least to me, that the city does need to try to figure a way to increase the contributions to the capital improvement plan, just to maintain the current streets and sewers and roads that we have now, let alone anything new. During the years that the city was generating excess revenues over expenditures, we were, you know, putting in a lot more money into the capital improvement plan. We always called it a one-time or a non-return, but it happened over a three- or four-year period, and then when it was stopped and pulled away, well, it was felt. So, I think most people who listened to that presentation would agree with that, that that's a need, a future need of the city. And that doesn't even include, I know, any of the ideas and some of the concepts about the downtown improvements that have been talked about. There's, I know- There's, I know there's going to be more cost than TIF monies available in that downtown, and there are no other funds that I know of that supplement those TIF funds. We've talked about the city, the amount of the city's reserve or savings funds. About five years ago, we had about 4 million, but due to various needs, we've had to draw that down to, we're down to about 1.5 million now. And of a general fund of 28 million, you know, I think that that needs to be increased as well. Probably a 3 million figure is probably closer to probably what, in the minimum amount that we should have. We're, we probably don't need as much savings as some cities do because we're kind of slow and steady as far as our finances. We don't have the big upswings in economic development because our sales tax is not one of our largest producers, like, say, Champaign. Champaign feels the fluctuations in the economy a lot more than we do. When it goes up, there's, goes up a lot, but when it comes down, there's, comes down as well. And so that would be the idea of a savings account would help you in those bad times if you really had an emergency or something, had to draw down on that rather than increase taxes. And in addition, I know that there have been a number of other goals and programs that have been mentioned, possibly for the future, additional public safety officers, possible relocation of a fire substation and the related costs, there are programs for historic and neighborhood preservation, there's some costs for our programs, there's some costs going to be involved with the civilian police review board, there are file road improvements that have been talked about, and improvements for the bicycles. None of those that I know of have any funds dedicated toward them at this point.
Any questions for Ron Eldridge? Questions? Okay. So this presentation is for information purposes only at this point. Oh, Mayor, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Well, I would like to say that on the High Cross Road, we are, we're trying to get some money from the state to pass the capital improvements plan.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Next, yep, you're still, you're still in the hot seat here. We're going to talk about resolution number 2007-10-022R, resolution determining the amounts of money necessary to be raised by the tax levy 2007.
This is the same process we've used on the tax levy started at, that we've used for the last 25 years. And this is not, we're not voting on the tax levy, contrary to the article in the News Gazette. All this really is doing is practically setting a date to have a public hearing. And if anything, this does limit us somewhat as a Cessna maximum amount. But because of a couple problems we have, one being the situation with Carl Hospital where they protested their taxes, we must levy, based on levying for the Carl amount in our Cess value, even though we, we don't collect it, we're not, it's not available to spend. So that causes those numbers to even be higher than they would otherwise. But for example, last year, and when we did the resolution, it showed a 12 percent increase in these numbers, but the actual final total property tax levy increased 6.3 percent with 3.5 percent of that being paid by the current homeowners. In other words, on average, the current homeowners paid 3.5 percent more last year. I'm sorry, excuse me, 4.75 for the current homeowners and 3.5 was new. So on average, the homeowners paid 4.75 more to us in property taxes than they did the year before. So you see, the numbers in this resolution have no real immediate direct relationship to the levy whatsoever. And we're going to be discussing the levy, and I will have a lot more information with the levy. I can give you his, tenure histories of tax rates and city rates and overall rates and Cess value increases and all that stuff. But it does work best, and if the system is set up to pass this resolution, have the hearing, your public input, and then discuss and vote on the levy, that's the way it's set up.
Charlie?
Yeah, Ron, you may have just answered the question I had, which was, so rather than take up the three, you know, the net increase for homeowners, which is 3.9 percent, new construction is 4.7, or 4.27, and Carl is 0.53, that, you know, that's sort of like 8-point-something percent, but you go to 12 percent. Is that, that difference then due to the piece that you have to carry for, for the Carl taxation issues?
Part of it is due to the Carl, and part of it is just wanting to make sure to provide you the flexibility when you get around to actually deciding on the levy.
Okay, so there's a fudge factor to that.
So that you're not, there's a fudge factor there.
Fudge factor, okay.
So that you're not entered on that. And that's why it will be, we know it will be much lower, much, much lower, of course, than the 12 percent.
And to follow up then, you know, last year, I don't remember the numbers, you know, but last year, you know, the average homeowner had a 4.75 percent increase. Would you expect that the increase this year would be closer to the 3.9 percent?
Yeah, right now, 3.9 is what the Cessor Joanne has told me. Actually, I believe last year, you know, she told me that it was probably going to be around 4, and I think I had that in my memos, and it really ended up being a little bit more than that. You know, it depends on a number of factors, which not under her control as to what the property values and when values, certain things come on and when certain things go off, so.
Any other questions for, okay, just have a question. The tax rate, this doesn't reflect an increase in the tax rate, meaning dollars per hundred-dollar Cess value, correct? It's just, this, this particular resolution keeps the tax rate at the, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the tax.
It doesn't really address the tax rate.
Okay.
It just says, we're going to have a public hearing, and the public hearing, we estimate that the total amount we're going to be receiving from new stuff and current homeowners is going to be more than 5 percent, so we need to have this public hearing by law.
Okay.
That's really what it does.
I look forward to, maybe this year, the News Gazette will actually not make a sensation out of this and will give the actual information. Well, they did. Okay. So next year, perhaps, we'll get the information. Each year, we plead and say, could you actually provide accurate information about what it is that we set this? Who sets a budget to be exactly what they say they're going to spend? No, they don't do that, especially if they're not allowed to go over that ceiling. They always give themselves some room, and in this case, we have to give ourselves quite a bit of room because of the Carl situation. Mayor?
Danielle, you asked about the tax rate. Our budget is based on keeping the tax rate at $1.29.
Correct.
And I would like to point out that in 1998, the Urbana tax rate was $1.48. So it's been going down. For three years, it was, for three or four years, it was held constant at about $1.31, and then it went down to $1.29. So we're going to try to hold it at $1.29.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion? We don't have a motion?
We have to move, I move to some, resolution 2007, and there's no additional numbers here.
Oh, it's?
Yeah. 2007-10-22R to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second?
We have a motion from Charlie, a second from Robert. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that carries. Next, we have resolution number 2007-10-023R, a resolution deeming certain funds in the special tax allocation fund for the downtown Urbana tax increment redevelopment project area as surplus funds and directing the payment and distribution there of 2007. You want to know if we have any questions?
I'm happy to discuss it and answer questions.
Okay, go ahead, Brandon.
I just wanted to make one comment. I support this. It's in, it's in our plan. It's always been our plan. We do it every year. My one comment is, when looking this year at the TIF plan for when we spend monies and what projects we spend them on, on page two, I had some email discussion with Ron and Tom and other staff, because I think the priorities here are a little out of date, and I think we all agree, and there's already been some discussions about how to update the priorities and get the right projects on the TIF priority list. Here, you'll see that there are three big projects scheduled for future years with the TIF money. In '07-'08, the big project is Downtown Streetscape Phase VII, which I understand is the corner of Main and Springfield. Then in '09, 2010, the next big project is Broadway Avenue Streetscape. And finally, in 2011, 2012, is the water and walnut improvements for Streetscape. And those are important priorities, but I think in discussions, really, the priorities of council are to do projects that are timely with the redevelopments of Denny's, of Main and Springfield, narrowing the downtown Main Street, Streetscape issues, doing other things that fit in with the redevelopments that are happening. And I think we all agree that's the right thing to do, so I just want to point out that council should be aware of this, and we all should be further coordinating with staff about when we update the TIF plan, getting the right priorities in here and getting real numbers that fit with, you know, what we think these projects are now. The Boneyard Creek Plan is one I didn't mention, too. But there's really no funding here for the Boneyard Creek Plan, which everyone loves the pictures we've seen and the ideas. We have to figure out a way to implement it, and it's in two TIF districts, TIF One and Two. So the TIF priorities are something we should watch and update as a group.
Go ahead, Ron.
Agree 100 percent. Only comment I have is that some of those projects may be in TIF Two or some of the other TIFs Too, so this was just a cash flow for TIF One. But I agree, this is, it's out of date. It does need to be updated.
So how do we do it? How do we update it?
You know, it's a process by which we update it.
We're going to meet as a staff, and I think they have a better idea of the priorities than I do, Tom does, and so does engineering, and we can come back with an updated cash flow plan. And we're probably, we're probably talking about a matter, you know, of a month or something like that to make sure we have the numbers correct.
Okay. Tom, maybe you want to respond to that? Hi, Tom.
Yeah, there was kind of an email discussion today, and I think the discussion was, we're poised on several large projects where the numbers aren't finalized and the actual, the improvements aren't quite finalized, including the Boneyard Project, our, the Cunningham Avenue Project is in both TIF Four and TIF Two, and then a variety of, you know, private development projects. So the email discussion was, yes, we have lots of projects that we need to prioritize, but we're working with some consultants to start finalizing, getting some numbers and that type of thing. So I would expect over the next few months that we'll have a better handle on some of these projects and what the cost might be.
Dennis.
Can you describe for me what the ongoing vocational training school expense is? I'm not really clear about what actually is happening with that process, with that program. Is that an existing program? I don't, I'm not aware of any vocational training program.
It's with the school district. They provide at their campus in downtown Urbana there. And it was a way, that is one of the eligible TIF costs, and so that was an easily identified way of returning to the school district some of the money that they lost when they agreed to extend TIF One. That's, you know, that was the handshake agreement between the city and the park district and the school district.
Okay.
We get their approval to extend TIF One beyond the time it originally was going to expire, and they were going to receive property taxes if it expired, and so that, you know, that was an easily identified cost.
I had a quick question. Is this voluntary or required by our agreement, or is it just that handshake you were talking about, the TIF One surplus distribution?
It's a, I think it's an informal agreement we had, but if we don't follow through on it, I'm sure you're going to be hearing from some people.
And this is annual, right? This has been our annual distribution that we do?
This is the fourth year we've done this, and, you know, that's when the TIF was due to expire, four years ago.
Okay, yeah, I'm recalling that. Any other questions? Robert?
I've raised the question on distribution and how it could potentially go. Is there other methods, other ways we could go about distributing it, for example?
Not, not under this process here. This is set by TIF law. We have to distribute it to all the overlapping governments that pay, that have taxes, and we have to distribute it on a proportional basis based on their share of the property tax levy over the total. And that's how we come up with those numbers. So, so we could not do it differently in this process here. As far as the other payments to the park district for the projects and the school vocational, you know, I think that, that probably could be negotiated between them.
I agree. Thanks.
Other comments? If not, motion would be in order?
I wouldn't do that. I would move that we send this ordinance to city council with approval.
We have a motion, a second, a clarification, it's the resolution, right? Resolution?
It's a resolution, yes.
Okay. So a motion from Dennis, second, from Lynn. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that carries. We'll see that next week. And then we have ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, police range improvements. This involves accepting a state grant.
My name's on this, and I don't know if I really can answer any questions other than, remember, it was in the budget document that we passed, and at that time, it was mentioned that they were, police were applying for this grant, and they'd now been awarded the $25,000 grant. And all this does is put the revenues in there and add those expenses to the project.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to move that we move this forward to council, ordinance number 2007-10-117.
We have a motion from Lynn, a second from Charlie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that carries. And last, but not least, we have vehicles for hire, ordinance number 2007-10-115, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances. We will hear from Delora, who's been very patient this evening.
Actually, it's going to be me.
Oh, okay.
I was just going to mention that, you know, Delora's come back to work full-time, and so we're real glad to have her back.
Welcome back.
I'm rewired now.
Oh, I'm glad.
Essentially, how this came about, Delora, along with the, was it the clerk, Marilyn? Is it the clerk? The city clerk for Champaign, after several discussions, determined that we needed to revisit the joint vehicle for hire ordinance that we share with Champaign, theirs is essentially identical. There's some very minor changes, differences, but essentially, we've agreed to act cooperatively so that it would facilitate the ease of use for cab companies, and we would be the ones who would actually issue the licenses and plates to the vehicles for hire and their companies and their drivers. However, it would be applicable in Champaign as well as Urbana. There were several issues that we tried to correct in our amendments to this ordinance. Some of them are just the way things were written. We wanted to kind of clarify, but the central issue involved that what types of vehicles for hire that are being used in both Champaign and Urbana has changed. I mean, typically, you know, you were talking about sedans and maybe, yeah, seven-passenger mini, minivan-type vehicles. And now what has come to the fore are these larger vehicles, these vans, I call them church vans. That's the only place I've really seen used them a lot, are these vans that can carry like 10 to 15 people in them. And so there was discussion about whether or not we needed to amend our ordinance to make it modern so that it encompassed regulating those vans as well as the other vehicles that were used, as well as the fact that the state of Illinois requires that vans of, or vehicles of certain types carry a plate that are marked with the suffix PT as opposed to LY for livery or TX for taxi. And we've had, actually conducted right here in council chambers, something of a public hearing where we invited all of the taxi companies and their drivers to come. I and legal counsel for the city of Champaign, as well as staff from finance department, from, from the city of Urbana, as well as staff from the clerk's office in Champaign, all sat here and kind of bandered about and tried to determine what, if any, changes we needed to make. Frankly, it was not well attended, but we wanted to give the opportunity for taxi companies and their drivers to be heard. What we determined was that we wanted to try to change the scheme so that if you were a vehicle for hire, we really don't care what kind you are. You're going to come under this, on the regulation here. So whether or not, we wanted to get away from these distinctions of, are you a limousine? Are you a taxi? Are you a sedan? Are you a van? What kind of van? How many people? And there's still some distinction in here. However, we more or less wanted to make it so that all of these vehicles fall under the vehicle for hire ordinance. And so we tried to make the language uniform in the ordinance to cover all of those. We added a definition for a public transportation vehicle. Frankly, I don't think that that is that important in the scheme of regulating the industry, but we wanted to make sure that it was clear that those types of vehicles are being covered. There was some discussion about whether or not to allow the larger vans to use the taxi stand, of which there is only one. stand, of which there is only one, which is the Amtrak station in Champagne. Heretofore, these larger vans were not allowed to, to use that. It was only sedans, and getting into questions of whether the large limousines, and you all have seen these limousines now, they're like stretch Hummers, you know, they can carry like 15 or 20 people. I mean, there were just a lot of changes in recent years regarding what types of vehicles get used for hire, and we wanted to try to make something that was fair and usable for all of those. And so those were, were the changes that we attempted to make here. And I don't know if there are any specific questions that you all might have.
Questions for Ron? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move ordinance number 2007-10-115 on to council with a motion for approval.
We have a motion from Lynn and a second from Charlie. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that carries.
I'm sorry, I, I, Delora just reminded me of something. I apologize for, for not speaking up on this before you took your vote. It's important that we allow Champagne to have an opportunity to take this through their study session portion before we pass ours. So I don't know how you want to facilitate that, if you want to table this and leave it at committee and before it gets moved, or if there's some other way to facilitate that, once it's gone to council.
When's it, when's it, when's Champagne?
They haven't given us a date yet.
Make your contingent.
Is it going to be, Delora's informing me that it may be their next study session.
Yeah, so can you?
Say they will move this forward to the council after Champagne's had a discussion.
Just a quick parliamentary procedure. Is there a way to erase a vote on a motion that's appropriate at this point, or do we just make an additional motion?
I think if you just make an additional motion, clerk, madam clerk, would you agree?
You can actually rescind your, your vote, you can call it back.
By a majority?
By a majority.
Okay, I just moved to rescind the previous motion.
We have a motion from Charlie to rescind, a second from Lynn. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now, please.
Motion of moving this forward to the council after Champagne council has discussed the specific process.
Okay, we have a motion from Lynn and a second from Charlie, and it looks like it's going to come to council, but it'll be after it goes to the council of Champagne. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, that carries, with no business, further business before us, we're now adjourned.